Opening Selectmen's meeting, March 26, 2018, at 5:30 PM at the Rutland Public Library. Motion, pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to sign Treasury warrant, 20 and payroll.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept minutes of February 26.
I have not read them, Mr. Clark.
Okay, we'll hold them for next week, how about March 12?
Motion approved, March 12, that's presented.
Do I have a second?
I haven't read them, so I'll abstain.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The 12th approved, we'll hold the 26th till next meeting, please. Motion to go into executive session, reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body.
So moved.
All those in...
Second.
Clark, aye.
Walker, aye.
DeBai.
Hethel, aye.
I do declare. We just came out of executive session to come into regular session. Public hearing for Rutland Sportsman's Club, change of management and unofficial interest for liquor license. Putting in the hearing, anybody here to...
Done already, signed the warrant and all that.
Could I have a motion to... Nobody here to represent him, can I close the hearing? Can I have a motion to sign the liquor license for Rutland Sportsman's Club?
So moved.
A second?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need to wait four minutes for the next one, or... Who was planning to be here? I don't see Rebecca Tuttle here either, so I don't know.
Can we skip around?
Yeah, let's skip around.
So can I do my two little things, because they're quick and easy, if you'd like to come back to them?
So where are you at?
New business.
New business, okay.
Yeah, Gary, I think you were included in my email, I have two items under new business, I just want to make sure you were in the loop on this.
Yes, I did.
Thanks. So this is the 10th anniversary of the ice storm, and DPW, Gary, has been really great about planting trees, we were a little more religious about it, I think, right at the beginning, I think we've lost a couple of years because of late snowstorms and things like that, we always tried to plant it around Arbor Day, but I'm hoping that this year we can do a little bit bigger of a 10th anniversary, plant a tree a month from April right up until the actual anniversary date of December 11th, which will be light to plant a tree, but I think if we dig the hole, we should be okay, at least get it in the ground. And I think, Gary, you and I talked about you finding some locations, and we may have, I'm not sure, local businesses or local residents come forward to sponsor those trees to be planted.
Okay, so the purchasing, they will purchase the trees?
Yes, yes, my expectation would be that the trees will be donated.
That's what...
Yes.
Would help far.
Yes, so I think for me, we just need locations, and Arbor Day is coming up, the end of April, so we've got about 30 days to work with this.
And how many trees are we talking?
April through December, what's that?
Okay, so just one a month, you're talking?
If you, I mean unless you think we could do more.
I mean 10 trees for the 10th anniversary is nice.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean honestly, finding locations is the easy part.
Okay.
Well, actually, because we're in the middle of construction season, for most of that timeframe, you're saying that's the tough part, to go out and dig holes.
Yeah.
So I didn't know how far you would go, and if you had other people donating their time to dig holes, local contractors and so on and so forth, I guess we'd have to talk about that later.
I think we could open this up, there are probably girl and boy scout troops that would love to get involved, I think as long as the town knows where it would like to plant trees on public lands, whether we want one to go up on Memorial Field, I know you've got a tree that's, you know, coming down out front, right, or two in front of Town Hall.
Yeah, we took one down already, yeah.
Took one down already, so, yeah, I mean I think the locations will actually help frame that, so that if somebody's coming forward and they say, you know what, this is a location that means something to me, I'd like to help and get involved in this particular tree planting.
Have you discussed and decided on breed?
I'm sorry?
Breed?
Nope, that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, that's, well, it's important, that's an important consideration, and I think you, as the tree warden, should make sure that you specify disease-resistant varieties and things like that, that aren't going to create problems.
Yeah, and I mean, we have Dick Williams here, I think, Dick, you and I, I'm thinking, are on the same page on this one, certainly I would go with the native hardwoods, right, sugar maples, I mean Maple Avenue is named that for a reason, and we're at the point of losing a reason why it's named Maple Avenue, most of those trees have been removed, they've hit their lifespan, and I, you know, I don't know if that's one of the considerations that we can take, but, so we have maples, the big white oaks, something like that, depending on the...
Versus...
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm not going to need Dick to take that lead. Well, we'll come back, Dick.
My only thought is, with the work you gotta do, we gotta find other people to do the work.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a very tight, close, hard construction season.
I know, and there's gonna be people out there that...
With the dam and the ship and I...
Should be able to help, so...
That's why I asked if there's any volunteers or local contractors, which I'm sure they will, I mean, I, we have a pretty good relationship with them, so.
We'll get the people...
But tree, there's really not a lot, it's a, it's a 10-foot hole, but I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to break up a whole crew.
No.
I mean, that's something you can, you can actually poke in the ground on a rainy day, so.
Okay.
But we can talk about that, we'll see if people are available to chip in.
All right, thank you, See, that got through one thing.
Hey, can we go back to our public hearing for Rutland's Pub and DBA Tavern on the Common, NBG Pub and Restaurant, they here?
Michelle Bombard.
How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Would you like to get up at the podium and talk to us?
Okay.
Tell us a little bit about what you're doing and where you're going and...
This is your chance to promote your business.
Yes, you'll be on TV and everybody will be ecstatic.
Really?
What would you like to know?
Tell us about yourself and what you're doing.
My name is Michelle Bombard, I've lived in Rutland since 94, I recently purchased the Tavern on the Common from Marcos Gobos. Our plan is to implement new, a new menu, we've, I've been there, I think it's about six weeks now, we've done a lot of cleanup, a lot of renovations, implemented new specials, we're open every day for lunch, before, it was Friday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, or Saturday and Sunday, I believe. Pretty much a lot of the same things, but just a few specials here and there, entertainment Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We kept the same staff, which is amazing, they are amazing, that's pretty much it, I wasn't expecting to, I don't know what that did, but I'm excited, we do have a great crew.
I've heard lots of good comments, people love the paint job, they've liked the specials, the french fries, I heard something about the french fries today.
I spoke with a woman who frequents the Capital Grill, and she said the prime ribs she had at, at your restaurant was the best she's ever had.
Oh, great, thank you. I'm all red with the camera.
Trivia, people are asking about trivia night, because you know, you're on the hot seat.
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Well, I did have a few requests for that to come back, but then I also had others that are interested in things such as mystery dinners, so we're, we might implement that in the near term, but we didn't see too many people, I mean, there was a few, there was a group, so I don't know, maybe we will.
All right.
We're trying to get as, you know, as many people back at the tavern and, we'll definitely consider it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So the board has a, the alcohol license and the Common Vic before you tonight.
Did you open the two hearings together, or?
No, I opened this one separately from the first one. But as far as these two for her, we can do both at the same time.
And we have everything we need, correct?
Yes. The last thing that's, ABCC will make the final decision on the alcohol license, so the local licensing authority will take care of its piece.
Okay.
So I'm gonna close the hearing, and could have a vote to approve or...
So, you said I can do both, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the liquor license transfer from Gobos Pub, DBA Tavern on the Common, to NBG Pub and Restaurant, and to transfer the Common Vic license from Gobos Pub, DBA Tavern on the Common, to the same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
So do we want Jim to come up, we're five minutes early? Can you handle that, Jim?
While he's, while they're setting up, you want to do the rain barrel, Sheila's rain barrel?
Get all Sheila's stuff out of the way.
We could squeeze it in.
Okay, so my, my second item, that I'm hoping we can activate, Gary, I included you on this email as well, so there is a rain barrel, rain barrel program that many of the Massachusetts communities do, Worcester's been doing it for many, several years, I think since 2011 or 2013, the only thing the town is responsible for is the delivery of the barrels by the company and coordinating pickup by residents who have already paid for them, so we do not deal with the money, it's considered a municipal service, this company, Great American Rain Barrel, is on state bid list under DEP, it certainly works with our stormwater management goals, as well as water ban issues that so many of the residents have in terms of their gardens each year, people could go onto the Worcester website right now and order one of these rain barrels through the Worcester website, and then they would have to pick it up in Worcester, in talking to the company, for whatever reason, and it kind of changes year to year with some of the smaller communities, they've seen a big hole in service in between Route 2 and sort of the Mass Pike, so Worcester's got their program going and going strong, the Fitchburg-Lehmanster area has a decent program, there's a big hole in Wachusett, so we could do this just for Rutland, we could certainly open it up to the Wachusett communities, it is hard for me to say, Gary, how many barrels would get delivered, I did talk to Margaret briefly about possibly working it into the Worcester County Conservation District seedling sale, which happens every year and pickup is at Jordan Farm, but my concern there is it being a private location, we'd still have to figure out a way to get volunteers to handle it, that's easy, but then once, you know, some of those barrels never get picked up, you always have a few left over, and what we would do with those, I think if we can work it out closer, more closely around your business hours, where people check in in the office, go out and get their barrel from there, it would be a great service to be able to provide to the residents, by doing it through the municipality and through the state bid list, the town's people who buy save about 50% on the cost of the barrel, were they to buy it retail anywhere else.
Do you have no idea how many barrels we're talking, until obviously people put their orders?
Yeah, first year of the program, I'm not, we could certainly call Worcester and see how their program grew over the years and kind of correlate that to population, but again, anybody could go to the Worcester website today and order off of there, they, really, they could go to any community and order a rain barrel and just have to pick it up wherever, Concord, right, you know, wherever they order it, that's where they need to go get it, so.
So you think shipment would be arranged to be shipped now and ready to the DPW?
Yep.
And the folks would have to come in and pick them up?
Yep.
Already paid for?
Yep, we have nothing to do with the money.
Proof of payment?
Proof of payment.
And they just pick up their own barrel, so we don't have to deliver them or pick them up?
Right.
I'll nominate Dick Williams.
All those in favor?
I'm mainly hoping it's something the board will support us moving forward with, it's a wonderful service that we just haven't been able to get our act together for in previous years, I've been thinking about it, and I've, I've bought a rain barrel from outside of the community.
Yeah, I can contact Lisa Trotto at Conservation District, I'm on the committee at this point, and see if they're interested in...
Yeah, in, in being the delivery, excuse me, the pickup point?
Yeah, pickup man and dispersment.
Okay.
And the thing is there, you know, the, the seedlings sale is on a Saturday, I forget now exactly which first one, May, or in May, and there are already volunteers there for handing out the seedlings, and just the rain barrels wouldn't really make much difference.
This would help to really compartmentalize the sale too, because you figure it's going to take us a few days to get it up and running, on our end mainly it just means putting a link up on our town website, maybe sending it out via email, to let residents know that the sale has started, but then if we're saying we would do pickup of Rutland rain barrels at the Worcester County Conservation District sale, that's, it's really only a month of sales, so I think, excuse me, so I think for this first year, I don't think we'd see big numbers, a few dozen, I hope. Hoping to move forward, do I, what do I need to do? Do we need, can I make my own motion?
Gary, I think, you know, by default you'd be kind of, you know, maybe coordinating this if it has to remain, you know, with, with the town, so are you comfortable with that? I mean, having the location be DPW if necessary, if it's not the Conservation District, so...
Yeah, the big thing I'd have to know is, obviously these items have to be secure, we have, I don't know if we have to schedule a certain time for pickup, my yard is a very active yard during the day, so I worry about those type of things, but depending on number of barrels, I mean, I'm sure some accommodation can be made.
Pickup is up to you, if you look at the Worcester website, they designate one day.
Oh, they do, and that's it, one day?
And if you don't make it, you need to call and make special arrangements, I don't, you know, and again, I'm sure we could reach out to Worcester and ask them how well that has worked, and certainly over the years, people aren't, it's not the same people buying barrels, so I think it's sort of self-limiting.
Yeah, as long as they're gonna be delivered and folks are picking them up, with proof of, proof, proof of payment, I don't see it as a big problem.
It's an opportunity to start educating about stormwater, too.
Yeah, so I think we can, Dick and I can do something.
Could I make a motion that the town begins the process of activating the sale with Great American Rain Barrel, again, on the state bid list, and I'll send out an email to set up all the little, the little things that need to be done.
Second.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Adams.
We all set?
Yeah. We'll check on it, dear.
So, good evening, my name is Kelly Brown, I'm the Central Massachusetts Regional Coordinator of the Green Communities Division, I am also here with my colleague in the back, Jim Berry, who is also with the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division, he's actually the Worcester Mass Regional Coordinator, and he'll give a little bit more of his background when he presents, I was here a few months ago, not too long ago, giving an overview on the Green Communities and Designation Grant Program, before I lead into tonight's conversation on specifically the Stretch Code, which is the main focus of the presentation, I just wanted to reiterate some of the reasons that Rutland is looking at becoming a green community, so there is grants available of up to $20 million annually for those communities that are considered qualifying communities, and that means becoming a designated green community, and in order for Rutland to become a designated green community, you need to qualify and meet five specific criteria, Margaret's been working really hard and reaching out a lot over the past few months regarding the other criterion, and also working with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, Dominique over there at, looking at the different criterion and seeing where Rutland fits and what needs to be done, so regarding Criterion One, which is to adopt as-of-right sitting, Rutland is looking at meeting this through renewable energy or alternative energy generation with the solar bylaw, also looking at the adopt expiry permitting, which means having that permitting process in place that's 12 months or less, the town's been...
That's part of the large-scale solar bylaw.
Yes, so that would be the generation as well, so that would go along with the as-of-right sighting, and based on the feedback from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and what I've seen to date, it looks like the solar bylaw that's in place would meet that criteria already for Criteria One. Then there's Criteria Three, which is putting together an energy reduction plan, which is basically two parts, putting together the baseline, which is all municipal energy use across buildings, streetlights, and vehicles, and then reducing that baseline by 20% over a period of five years, and working with a vendor that would come out and look at the different buildings to see energy improvements that could reduce that baseline, which is underway, and I know you've been working with Dominique as well at getting you your information and your energy into Mass Energy Insight, which is the free web-based energy management tool that we offer to all municipalities to help them put together and track their energy use. Now, the energy reduction plan would need to be adopted by the Board of Selectmen as well as the Superintendent of Schools if Rutland chooses to include any of their schools in the energy reduction plan.
Even if the buildings belong to the town, are owned by the town?
Yeah, because it's, is it still run by the...
It's still run by the design?
Yep, so basically what would happen is you would have, just specify which buildings, which schools you were looking to include, and then the superintendent would need to adopt the plan as well, just basically supporting the measures that are in the plan at the school.
Okay. From the board's information, we're looking at having FY '17 be the baseline year, because that's the first year, it was at the end of FY '17 that we started to do some energy, we did the lighting retrofits and things, so we thought that would be a good year, that would be a high energy.
Yep, and that's very common to pick a more recent year as well, to give you more time to also complete the rest of the measures that are in the plan in the five-year period. Criterion Four is to purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles, I went over this a little bit in the past, it's really bringing forth a fuel-efficient vehicle policy, which really looks at the vehicles in the community more on the administrative side, just to reiterate, heavy-duty DPW trucks over 8,500 pounds, they'd be exempt, emergency response vehicles are exempt, so like, we are looking at administrative-type vehicles and looking to, when you purchase them, meet a certain mile-per-gallon rating, whether it's an F-150, there's a mile-per-gallon rating, sport utility vehicles, there's a mile-per-gallon rating, compact vehicles and so on, and the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, has it come before the board?
It has, and the board voted it unanimously.
Oh, see, so I don't need to go into any more detail, I can skip to Criterion Five. I thought I heard you mentioning that you were going to be bringing it before them. So Criterion Five is the main topic tonight, and that's to require all new residential construction to reduce lifecycle costs, and the recommended way to do that is through the Stretch Energy Code.
Excuse me, I have a question, it said that larger than 3,000 square feet, is that correct?
It does, so the language that's up here, that's a really good question, is from the statute, so when the Green Communities Act was put forth back in 2008, that was when the Green Communities Division was created, and under the Green Communities Division, the specific language that's up here is the five criterion, and when we went to implement the fifth criteria, which does say above 3,000 square feet, at the same time, the Board of Building Regulations and Standards was putting out the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, and they had this optional code called the Stretch Code, the Stretch Code, which we're gonna talk about tonight, does apply to all new construction, so above and below, and the recommended way to do it is through the Stretch Code, because that was really the way that we found that was enforceable, along with complying with the base code and the base building code that's already in effect, and what Jim will do is really tell you the way that they relate, and he'll go into a little more detail on the differences tonight.
Excuse me, Kelly, that's Will Casinelli, our building commissioner, so he'd be, yeah, he'd be largely responsible for...
Well, I thought I read that before, and I, and I said 3,000 square feet is, most of the homes that are built are just under 3,000 square feet.
Yep, so this is a real, it's a very common question that we get, one, because we do want everyone to be aware of the actual statutory language of the five criterion, because that question comes up, but then there is sometimes a little confusion of how that relates and how we got to the Stretch Code, but the Stretch Code, just to reiterate, does apply to all new construction, and that was the recommended way, because it is enforceable, and it's a way for communities that have the Stretch Code and that don't have the Stretch Code, for builders to be able to operate in between both. Does that make sense?
Not really.
Jim will try again, Jim, Jim usually does the second round of it, hopefully after the presentation, maybe it will, it will help. So just to go into a little bit on the grant funding, when a community becomes a designated green community, they receive a couple different things, we do have a, we do recognize each green community at Green Communities Event, where we give out road signs, certificates, and actually a big check, which communities love.
It is really a big check.
It really is a big check, and then, in addition to that, there's the designation grant, and the way the designation grant is calculated is based on a formula.
We needed heating systems upgraded, we were trying to do some projects every year out of the capital budget, well, we don't have a capital budget, okay, out of working budget, well, we don't have much money in the working budget, so we were struggling to make some capital improvements over time, when I heard that if you become a green community, you could have money to do lots of projects all at once, if they were energy efficiency-related, so I volunteered as a selectman to go and learn more about the green communities, to see if maybe it was worthwhile for Belchown to pursue, turns out, it was worth our while to do so, it also turns out that they were looking to hire someone to go and explain it to people, and I guess, you know, so here I am. Be careful what you volunteer for, in terms of extra work as a member of Board of Selectmen, you could be out every single night, not just one night a week. So, reiterate what Kelly mentioned before about Criteria Five, there is language in the legislation that created Green Communities Act and Green Communities Program, it created Green Communities Division, to hire people to go and explain it, and then have these grants, and when we first did this, we were saying, how are we going to ensure that new construction is energy efficient, there's, it opened up to people, give us some ideas on how we could work that out, City of Boston offered a couple different suggestions, neither one of which we could withhold water, they were just lovely things that some city councilor had proposed, it was lovely, no, we needed something that would ensure that the building, your building was in fact energy efficient, turns out, the only way you can impact while buildings are done is through the building code, and it also turns out that the building code evolves over time, every three years, the energy code changes, and every year that the energy code changes, it becomes a little bit more energy efficient, so someone at the BBRS, to Build, Bureau of Building and Regulations and Standards, who owns the building codes, suggested, why don't we offer a Stretch Code, a bit of a stretch from the standard building code to the almost next version, because I know what the next version was about to be like, we, we know today what the next version is looking at, because they're already talking about it three years in advance, so the idea was, if you adopted the optional building code that was more energy efficient than the standard building code, then DLR felt that we could, we could consider that compliance with Criteria Five, because it does in fact guarantee that the building would be more energy efficient, so, in a town, the Stretch Code must be adopted as a general bylaw by town meeting, in cities, it's often done by city council, if you have another suggestion on how to meet Criteria Five, we're happy to listen to it, but in eight years, no one has, no one has been able to come up with one. So, one of the first things I'd like to talk about is, not only was I a member of Board of Selectmen, but before that, I was on the planning board, which shows you how smart I am, and when we first started doing the Stretch Code and the green communities, a lot of people said, well, what the heck is it? And I wasn't sure what it was, but as a member of the planning board, we said, let's send a postcard to everyone who had pulled a building permit in the previous years, and invite them in and talk about it, and in Belchown, we had 100 new building permits a year, the second year I was on the board, and I said, holy mackerel, 100 new houses, and the second year happened, I said, holy, something else, so we had to figure out how to direct growth, how to direct the zoning, and so I got to know quite a few buildings, builders who were doing subdivisions, and so we invited them all in, says, okay, here's what little we know about the Stretch Code, it's basically the next version of the building code, what questions do you have, what are your concerns, so I like to go through some of the things that popped up early on, because they were clearly of concern, and there's, a lot of them are not, wasn't true at the time and still aren't true, but they still float around out there, so one of the things is, well, the Stretch Code's non-experimental, how are builders gonna figure out how to do a Stretch, what the heck is a Stretch Code? Turns out, it's not non-experimental, it was based on the Energy Star for Homes program that has been existence for a number of years, holy mackerel, this guy really wants me to touch him, there we go, it's basically Energy Star for Homes, so as you know, there's Energy Star for Homes. It's basically Energy Star for Homes, so as you know, there's Energy Star appliances, there's Energy Star, all sorts of things going on, there's always, no, not always. For a number of years, there's been an Energy Star for Homes program, it's a federal program that offers financial incentives to builders who build energy-efficient homes, but you have to prove it's energy efficient, so there's a process involved, I'm going to talk about what that process is, but the stretch code, rather than create a brand-new program, which they piggybacked on existing ones, which is a former selectman, I wasn't sure I believed it first, but it's actually true. So one of the things we did in Belcher Town was, we had people who had built Energy Star for Homes come in and talk about them and what the process is, and builders are saying, oh, all right, it's okay, I get it. So another misconception was, the stretch code would require tight, unhealthy homes, because if you're trying to make a house energy efficient, you're trying to keep the heat in, maybe you're going to make it too tight. I know none of you are old enough to remember back in the 70s when the first oil embargo happened and you couldn't buy gasoline except Monday, Wednesday, and Friday if your license plate ended in an odd number, and Tuesday and Thursday if your license, I know none of you are old enough to remember that, but I read it in a book one, one time. And during those days, there was some real concern about importing oil from people who were turning off the spigot, who didn't like us and jacking up the price. So there was a lot of things going on to reduce our oil consumption, especially our foreign oil consumption, and one of the things that people started doing is, when you're building a house, let's put plastic under a sheetrock, that'll make it nice and tight. Turns out, that was a really bad idea, sheet, plastic under a sheetrock will make a tight, unhealthy home, it'll be mold, it'll be mildew, that, so there was a concern, when the stretch code was promulgated, was talked about, that we would have a bunch of tight, unhealthy homes. The answer is no. In the 20 years intervening since we did those previous construction techniques, we've learned more about building science, there's been more materials invented, Tyvek, for instance, other processes where you can actually have a nicely tisheled wall and not have it unhealthy. So it was a concern early on, it's never been a problem with the stretch code, it's never been a problem with Energy Star for Homes. A third concern was, especially where I live, out in Belcher Town, where we don't have natural gas, almost everybody builds with oil heat. And oil heat is harder to get energy efficient because oil burners are not really, really efficient. If you had a good oil burner tomorrow, down to a local big store, you're likely to get 87% efficient, which is not bad, but that means 13% of the stuff is going up the chimney. So it's hard to get an energy-efficient home with an oil-heated house, so many people move to propane instead because you can get a much higher efficient system. It's not impossible to do with oil, but it's a little bit more difficult. A fourth concern was that town residents will be required to update their existing homes. This concern is, again, out where I live, where we don't have public septic sewer systems, everyone has a septic system, there's a thing called Title V that you may know about, which says, if you sell your house, before you sell, you have to make sure that it meets the latest and greatest regulations, and if it doesn't, you have to pay to have it upgraded before you can sell the house. So there's some concern about, if we adopt the stretch code and then we sell an old house, will we have to upgrade it? The answer is no, it's never been that way, it's always a concern, so I like to get these concerns and fears and misconceptions out early on to say, these were things that brought up early, we were worried about them, they're no longer true.
Yeah, it exempts additions, renovations, and repairs.
The brand-new version, yeah.
Brand-new.
Yeah, so the current stretch code that happened January 1 of 2017 only applies to brand-new residential construction or brand-new commercial construction over 100,000 square feet. So what we say is, eight or nine years ago, the stretch code was a stretch. In 2009, a lot of people were comparing how, what they had to do to build the stretch code compared to the previous version. It was a bit of a stretch, it took more work, you couldn't build a 2x4 wall and have some R13 installations stapled up by some kid home from college. You could do that in the old building code and get away with it, but the, the stretch code said, no, you've got to have 2x6 walls, you've got to have really good insulation, you've got to have the insulation inspected. But on July 1 of 2014, the standard building code, which was anticipated when the stretch code was created, came into effect, and it required more insulation, it required better windows, it required blower door tests, it required those kinds of things that were involved in the stretch code, the stretch code was basically being, you were basically adopting the earlier version, earlier, you're adopting the next version earlier and being a front rider. So any home built in your town in the last three and a half years has been built almost to the stretch code. It's had far more insulation required than the previous versions of the building code.
We are under 2015 now.
Right, but so, what I'm, the point I'm making is, the 2012 code that happened in 2014 almost got the stretch code and the building code together, the standard building code. You had to have a blower door test, you had to have better windows, so what we say is that the base code caught up to the stretch code, and some builders thought it was easier to use than the 2012 code because of the insulation levels, there's a trade-off you can do between how you get there, I'm going to, I'm going to get to that in a second here. So now the key point is, the stretch code is no longer much of a stretch because in January of 2017, there's a new base code, the 2015 code, thank you, and a new stretch code, which is almost no stretch at all. The requirements for the insulation, the requirements for windows, the requirements for heating systems have come almost together. The basic difference between the two is the stretch code requires you to have a home, energy rating services, energy raider involved, one more consultant who's going to inspect the house and help you, look at the house and ensure that it's energy efficient. So the standard building code, you can build a house, it's probably pretty energy efficient, the building inspector is going to look at it and say, yeah, the insulation's pretty good, yeah, it's air sealed, we've done a blower door test, it's, it meets the code. With a stretch code, you have to have an outside expert be involved in planning the house and inspecting the house and certifying that it is in fact energy efficient. And there's some more money, we'll show you some what the dollars are. Just to give you an idea of what we're talking about, the stretch code is about insulation, doors, windows, mechanicals, things that apply to energy. I'm mindful of the clock here. The process is, you have to hire a home, energy rating services expert to be involved early on, they're going to do computer modeling, so if you're going to build a brand-new house, you go to your builder, if you're going to build it yourself, you're going to have a builder build it for you, or if you're a builder building custom houses, the first thing you have to do is think about, well, what kind of house am I going to be building, right? You have a plan, you have an idea of the house you're going to build, you have to find a electrical subcontractor, you've got to find a plumbing subcontractor, you've got to find an insulation subcontractor, you have to find a home, energy rating services, energy contractor also, and you have to talk to this person before you even get a building permit, and you're going to do computer modeling, that's what step one is. You're going to talk to the building, to the energy raider and say, how big a house are you going to build? Uh, 2,500 square feet. How big is it? That's two stories. What kind of windows are you going to use? What are we thinking about using, one Anderson version, blah, blah, blah? You plug in this information to a computer, and it compares what you attempt to build with the old version of the building code and sees how much more energy efficient is your home versus that one, and we're going to find a score on this thermostat over here. So we're going to look at the heating system, the cooling system, the water heating system, the lighting appliances, and every time we do something slightly better than what we used to have to do in 2006, this thermometer starts dropping. And so you can sit there with your home, energy rating services expert and say, he's going to say, yeah, we need to get a few, a few more points, should we add extra insulation? Maybe we do a better heating system, maybe we do less windows on the north side to get smaller windows, maybe we do more? There's a variety of things you can do to make the thermostat go up and down, and the home builder, the homeowner, and the hers raider have a conversation about, what is it we're likely to build? So there's computer modeling that happens before you get a building permit, and then in-process inspection. This person is going to come out and look at the house before the sheetrock goes on, they're going to look at the insulation, they're going to look to see if the, is it air sealed all around, they're going to do blower door tests. The blower door test was unusual six years ago because this gentleman in the picture is doing a blower door test, they close the doors and windows, they put the house under pressure, and they measure air changes per hour, they're measuring how much air is going out that fan, and if there's air going out, then it must be leaked somewhere, so that's how you know how leaky the house is. So a blower door test was unusual, it measures how tight the house is to make sure it's tight enough, it also measures it's not too tight. Early on, this was unusual, but in 2014, everyone had to have a blower door test. And in 2017, not only you have to have a blower door test, it has to be performed by someone who's licensed to do a blower door test. A few years ago, you could have maybe your brother-in-law buy a blower door and maybe get a, now you can't do that. So, in your town today, a new home building permit pulled tomorrow has to have a blower door test done by a hers raider, so the builders are already contracting with these folks already. With a stretch code home, that person has to help you do the computer modeling before you start, they do some in-house inspections, they do the blower door test, they check the insulation, they check the, the class of windows, we said we're going to put a certain kind of window in here, and they go, look, did you really put that window in there? And then there's a final modeling at the end. How much is it going to cost? Well, it costs a bit money, it's going to cost you some money more to build a home to stretch code versus non-stretch code. And so, just analysis in two slides, this is the summary page, I'm going to go to detail page in just a half a second. So what we're talking about is a 2,500-square-foot home, three-bedroom, single-family, heated with, do we have natural gas in town?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so let's skip right to propane. 2,500-square-foot home, heated with propane, in the Worcester area, the upper left, it says target is 55 and the example base is 66, and the example stretch is 55, that left-hand corner. So just building this house the way a builder often does with propane, they get a thermometer score of about 66, which is a pretty good number already, it's already more efficient than the old version, right? But we need to get to 55, and so this is the page, it shows what we're doing to get to more energy efficient, drop the thermometer, and what the extra costs are. If I walk over there, will the microphone still pick me up so I can point at some things?
Yeah.
No! Hi, Mom. If I had known I was on TV, I was going to get my hair done, is that what she said? Oh, good, that'll do me. So, one of the first extra costs to a stretch code is getting a hers raider, getting a person involved. So these are the features we're going to talk about, these are the standard building code, and these are the things we did to meet the stretch code. So you have to have a hers raider anyway, but to get the hers raider involved in the whole thing, we put an extra 500 bucks to be involved with it. Windows, they had pretty good windows here, point three is a good U-value windows, but to make that number drop a little bit, they did slightly better windows, and they paid a little bit more money, 500 bucks we put on the scale here. The heating system, a standard propane heating system is 92% efficient, that's a pretty good furnace, but if you go to 96%, you can drop that thermometer even more, and that's about only $300 more. So you spend a little bit more money upfront for a better system, you get that thermometer to drop so you can get some rebates, and you get more, save money year after year after year. So these are the things that we changed from the standard house to a stretch code house to get the thermometer down. We made no changes in how tight the house is, we made no changes in the foundation insulation, no changes to walls or insulation, we basically changed hardware to make that number better, and the total price was $2,600.
But Jim, you're not required to change just the hardware, right? You can change any one of those items.
Thank you, you're exactly right. So there's, on the, in the red column here, so the cost that we guessed at by doing the easy way of just changing hardware was $2,600, but because we're using better equipment, we can get a rebate of close to $1,600, so the extra cost to build to stretch code, in this particular case, was only $1,000. So if the builder who's building a house takes $1,000 and adds it to the retail value, the $1,000, do they do that? I don't know how they price houses, but if they chose to take that extra $1,000 and add to the cost, it'd be another 100 bucks in the down payment, another 77 bucks a year on the mortgage, but you're saving $475 a year in savings of energy costs, so you have a positive cash flow year one, and year two, and year three, and year four, you're saving money year after year after year. We have a whole bunch of these with different scenarios, but again...
To Margaret's point of...
You could have chosen to not do the windows, you could have done more insulation, you could have done, this is a, the interesting thing about it is, if you, with the building code, you can do the performance path, which is what this is called, because we're going to measure the performance of the house as a whole, or you can do a prescriptive path in the building code, where you just follow the prescription, exactly what it says, and you have no choice about how much insulation to put in the attic, you have to do it. So some builders say, you know, I like this because I have some flexibility, I can choose what features to focus on to get that number where it needs to be. We have examples for oil, we have examples for propane, example for, and I could go on for a long time, so I'm just going to, you stop me when you want more information about, just, commercial code, do we have a lot of commercial building in this town?
Not too much.
Not yet, there we go, not yet.
Yeah.
There you go. Well, if you had new construction that was over 100,000 square feet, it would have to be more energy efficient, but that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big building. For documentation, well, we'll, your building inspector and I will figure this out, as Kelly mentioned, there's lots of towns that already had done this, when we first started, we said, so who's going to say yes to this besides Cambridge and Amherst, right? Who else would do that? Well, it turns out, quite a few people would do that, and it turns out that the fears that we had eight, nine years ago, and there was 35 people the first year, another 12 the second year, but after July of 2014, when the codes got really close, more and more people said, I'm in, it's not that much difference, and my town needs the money for the school building, so quite a few, this map has filled in quite a bit in the last couple, three years. In fact, some of the towns have said to me, no, thank you, in 2009, 2010, because I don't want to be the first one on the block doing this, and I'll let my neighbors do this, and I'll come back, okay, so, they're still getting houses built, that didn't destroy their new growth potential. So the summary is, the stretch code is no longer much of a stretch, you do need a hers raider's involvement, but the base code requires one also, the extra cost is almost completely offset by the Mass Save Residential New Construction Program. Additions, renovations, and repairs to existing residential homes are absolutely exempt, so if you have an existing home, you're putting an addition on, you're knocking a wall out and putting a room in, you're putting a new, don't worry about it, it has nothing to do with the stretch code. Oh, there we go.
So if you're in an existing home and you want to buy a new refrigerator, you don't have to meet stretch code requirements for the most efficient refrigerator there is.
That's correct.
Oh, boy, get the ice water.
That'll save some...
So, the question from the building inspector is, how about a new furnace? The answer is no, the stretch code only pertains to new construction, whether it's new residential construction or new commercial construction. If you've got a new furnace in, I think that the standard building code has some minimum requirements for it, but it has nothing to do with the stretch code. There's nothing above and beyond the standard building code that is required due to the stretch code other than brand-new houses. How many new houses a year do we do in town?
At least, I think, well, I think we're going to be shooting for probably at least 50.
Are they mostly propane?
Yes.
Ready? Yeah.
Less than 5% of oil.
Yeah. The numbers are good, and if you get a high-quality propane, you don't have to do a Masonry chimney, right?
Right, more efficient.
Yeah, so you can save some, you save some money on that.
PVC exhaust.
Yeah.
A question from Mr. Sullivan.
Just a quick question. Other than the initial $1,000 expense, what's the downside to it?
So the downside many years ago was unknown, what the heck, how am I going to do this? The expense difference was more seven or eight years ago because compared to the previous building code, when you could use 2x4 walls and a little bit of insulation, now you have to have better insulation. The previous code, the quality of windows was a lower threshold.
But today, what's the downside?
You're asking a guy who doesn't see one.
I didn't see one either, that's why I asked the question.
Well, the only downside would be your freedom. You might want, you might not want something like that.
Except this only applies to new construction, Willie.
Right, I know that, yeah. I mean, I don't see a lot of downside, too.
I mean, it's the, it's the, it's the new homeowner that's going to pay.
Correct, only the new homeowner is going to. And again, the question is, if it's $1,000 or $2,000 or $3,000 more, and we're talking about a $300,000 house, so are they going to sell it for $301,000 to make up the difference?
Well, and...
Probably not, right?
Could you?
And your annual savings.
And your annual savings is more than offset, if you, if they did raise it up, your mortgage, your extra mortgage to pay for that is much less than your annual savings, yes, sir? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Jim, can you go back to the screen that had the options for the builder?
Maybe.
Yeah. I'm just interested in this. Do you have any sense of, from the builder's side of things, or I guess from the purchasers, whether or not new construction purchasers are given these options when they are building their houses? I'm wondering how many new homeowners know enough about this to say, "Guess what? I actually want you to upgrade. I want to have my house meet the stretch code." You know, maybe they're not going to the level of the LEED certification.
Right.
But this is one step below that, and we certainly have plenty of homeowners in town who are doing these things after purchase on their own time.
Right. So the question is, how do we... Do people know about all these choices? And the first thing I'll say is, if you're building a brand-new home in a stretch code community, you'll have to meet with the HERS Raider in advance before you can get a building permit.
Yep.
Because you're gonna be putting in the modeling to see what that thermometer number actually is. The computer's gonna kick out a piece of paper that you're gonna hand the building inspector, "This is the home we expect to build." And the HERS Raider, excuse me, the HERS Raider is intimately involved with the Mass Save New Residential Home Program and where the rebates and incentives are. That's partly how that person gets paid. So they are gonna be talking with people about choices of, "You know, if we get a slightly better heating system for 300 bucks, we can drop that thermometer, and you can save a ton of money." So, the Home Energy Rating Services Expert is the person you wanna be talking about. Just like, if you're doing plumbing and you're making some plumbing decisions, you wanna talk with a good plumber. If you're doing some electrical stuff, you wanna talk to a good electrician. If you're doing energy-related stuff, you need to talk with a good Home Energy Rating Services Expert.
So what you're saying, who they're talking to, is in an on-spec situation, the builder. But if you were talking about a person who is planning to build a home with a builder, which we have both of those things happen in town, that person would have that input from the HERS inspector?
Yeah. So, let me tell you about my daughter. With her son and two children finally moved out of my house. They had no children when they moved into the house, two children. And they built a home to stretch code because it's Belcher Town. And, of course, they couldn't just buy one out of a book. They couldn't just, you know, walk down the street and buy it. That's what took so long. And they literally went with the builder and the HERS Raider, all three of them got together and talked about... Of course, my son-in-law thinks, you know, it's absolutely everything, 'cause he can Google everything, and so he and the HERS Raider would have all sorts of interesting conversations. But eventually, they came to a list of stuff that they wanted to do. They got their number down low enough where they got all of the extra stuff paid for through the federal government. Yeah. They did 10-inch walls, sort of really, really high insulated. They have these things for heat everywhere. They don't have a propane heater or an oil heater. This is all they have. And they have solar panels on the roof that produces electricity that run these things, air-source heat pumps, so...
I have one last question of concern. Our Inspection Services Department is already beyond out straight. And how much impact will this have on the department?
Should have none, because the builder is going to be, when they ask for a building permit, is gonna deliver a piece of paper that says, "Here's the house I'm gonna build," from the HERS Raider. And the HERS Raider is gonna do the inspections.
We still have to do the inspections.
Yeah, you want us to do any less?
Won't be doing any less.
But he won't be doing any more.
Okay.
And the HERS inspector is gonna hand him a piece of paper that says, "I have inspected the energy features of this house, and here's the final score." And he has to hand that person, that piece of paper back to the building inspector when it's all done, before they get a C of all. So, no extra work. And some builders, some inspectors say, "You know what? I don't have to go out and look at inspection anymore, 'cause this guy's gonna do it." But early on, early on, you're gonna do it, 'cause I know you're gonna do it.
He would continue.
Sure, of course, yeah, of course, of course. But some building inspectors say, you know, with some builders, they say, "You know, okay, I know..."
We don't wanna know the towns.
No? Okay, okay.
We have a HERS inspector that lives in town. You gotta get him to our town meeting.
Ah.
A DOER is also willing to come to our town meeting and speak to this as well.
Quick question. What's the next three years look like, you know, for upgrades? Is it gonna...
Yeah, let me just repeat in case a camera picks up. So what happens in three years? Is it gonna get crazier?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a fair question. Historically, I can say that when the stretch code came out, it was a bit of a stretch. And then the standard building code changed in 2014, the standard building code kinda caught up to it. And there were some people pushing to say, "Let's make a stretch code, even more of a stretch of that one, and then drop that thermometer, and then let's keep..." Cooler heads prevail and say, "You know what? These numbers that we're getting today are pretty good." The idea that the legislation says, "Let's ensure that homes are energy efficient." And it's the involvement of the HERS inspector that really does ensure that it's energy efficient. So short story is, in 2017, when it changed, it did not get drastically different again. I don't suspect that this administration's gonna push to make it crazy. However, if they decide they did, you'll get a six-month heads-up about the building code is changing, and the town could choose to un-adopt the stretch code, the same way they adopted it. They just would be, they would still, if you had gotten a grant from us and put insulation in the fire station, we would not come and take the insulation out. Whatever money you had gotten spent, you can keep. It's just that if you decide to un-adopt the stretch code, you would not be eligible for future grants. But there is a way out.
Besides the compliance report, is there a book? Is there an energy code book or anything that the stretch code puts out?
So, the question is, is there a book that teaches people how to build a stretch code?
Code book. Is there a code book?
So there's a code sheet. It's basically, it's basically three sentences long. It says, "If you're building new residential construction, you must follow the performance path of the standard building code." It just points, so the previous stretch code actually had pages and pages of stuff you had to do. The new stretch code says, "Just use the performance path of the existing building code." 'Cause as you know, there's a performance path and a prescriptive path. There's three pieces of performance path. You can use any one of the three that you wish. Energy Star, or HERS, or...
And the RES check report.
Right.
And the COM check report.
Right. But again, the HERS Raider is the key to this piece.
What is the HERS Raider, the Energy Star Raider, or the FIRE Raider also, right?
No FIRE. No, it says no FIRE safety.
FIAS. FIAS or FIAS, I don't know how they say it. Three different Raiders.
All I know is the Home Energy Rating Services Expert, H-E-R-S.
HERS.
HERS.
Oh.
And they're, so they're licensed, there's a national, RESNET is a national organization. They were created when they were doing the Energy Star stuff. There's a RESNET system, there's a HERS providers, and there's HERS Raiders themselves, so there's a whole...
Some would call them self-energy star Raiders.
Well, if they're HERS, what I would ask for is, "Show me that you're HERS certified." If I was you, I'd say, "I don't know what you call yourself."
I read that. So we've been dealing with a HERS Raider for three years.
So what you might be referring to is for the, under the new construction program that offers Mass Save Rebates, there's the Energy Star rating, which also doubles with, but that could be what you're referring, on the Energy Star side. That's where they're talking about it. But that's HERS Raiders working to get the Energy Star rating as well.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Are you available for additional questions from our building commissioner?
Yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely. And once, tell me, did you want me to tell me?
May 12th, Saturday, May 12th.
Is she in the book already?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Oh, while she's breaking down, let's jump down to the Wachusett Street 61A notice.
My hinges.
This is for... This is for construction of solar.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Jim.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Actually, you don't.
Yeah?
Look, there's only three of us here, so we're...
Is this about the pilot agreement?
This is about, no, this is the, it's the land coming out of 61A.
Just coming out, okay.
But the pilot agreement is actually, since you're talking about this, the pilot agreement is almost ready for execution. Town meeting voted that quite a while ago.
I had a question about it. Did we, did we get the sign? The sign, for the common? Did they say, "Oh, yes, I'll be..."
Oh, no, we haven't gotten the sign yet.
Okay.
No, that, yet.
Yeah. I feel that it's something that should be pushed.
Okay, we'll stay on it. They're still looking to do more in town.
So this 61A was very clear-cut, right? Did I see, the attorneys went through it? I didn't see any issues with it?
None.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I would like to make a motion to release the right of first purchase of the town of Rutland on the chapter 61A property, or conversion of the chapter 61A property by the Linda M. Taylor, 2016, Invocable Trust, located at 67 Wachusett Street in Rutland. 20.46 acres of a 92.5 acre parcel for use as a solar farm.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, just one point of order. The RDIC voted at their last meeting to have expressed no interest in that property, but the chairman has been remiss in getting that documentation to the town administrator, so I apologize for that, but I'm telling you that we took that vote formally last week.
Yeah, I was there, but you remember?
I understand, I just...
Okay, thank you.
Allohs in favor?
Well, so since that was brought up, did all the other appropriate commissions reply?
I did not receive responses.
None.
There's a deadline of, it was in last week, if there was interest from the town to submit to... But everything was the certified mail to the boards and committees.
So I got a motion made. I'll second it. Allohs in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I could just add to Dick's point about the, about the sign. The solar committee has been interested in a solar LED signboard for the center of town, permanently placed. And Nexamp has, happens to be the developer of this particular solar development, and the solar committee is advocating for Nexamp to contribute to the cost of building that sign. So we're looking at a combination of grants and donations to get a sign up, hopefully in the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I request, I mean, these 61As, some of them are small, and we don't put a lot of, we put effort, but we don't necessarily put any real serious thought into testing or taking our right of first purchase. But, in the absence of our other town committees and commissions even responding with a yes or no, and I appreciate the RDIC is here to say, "We did talk about it, thank you." But the fact that we heard nothing from Conservation Commission, from Rutland Land Conservancy, really? I wonder if our board could send notices out saying that maybe omission of response is not really a response? You know, do you take it as, "Well, here's your deadline, and if we don't hear from you, I guess that means no"? That's not necessarily the way to move forward with this, 'cause a serious one might come up one of these days.
My feelings toward this whole thing, it shouldn't even be... Rollback taxes gotta be taken, and it's not being sold, it's being reused to something else.
But conversion is still covered under that.
I know. Margaret and I went over this today, and I said, "Okay, whatever," but it's not being sold, sold.
The town, the town has rights under 61A, and if our boards and commissions aren't responding, then we're really not exercising our rights. And this one was easy. I don't have any questions about this one either. But sometimes they're not so easy.
Abby does try a number of different ways to get responses, and...
Yeah.
And we could certainly monitor it.
I gotta get that young lady behind you up and moving, because she's running late, late.
The commission, you know, let it go, but it was, the owner didn't change, and that's why we felt that...
That's the way I feel, too, Richard.
Exactly.
Rebecca Tallow, please.
Sorry.
Sorry that you're...
That's okay. That happens.
No, it's not okay, but hey, thank you.
We're on a tight ship, right? I'm here to discuss and get your approval for the recommendation for the FY19 health insurance options that are, we're providing to the town employees. We had, first off, our insurance advisory committee met two times this year to discuss the rate increases to our health insurance and dental insurance. I wanna thank them for their time and volunteering to be on this committee. It's Justin Bassett, representing the fire, Neil Viner from DPW, Phyllis Chardier from Dispatch, Jay Citronell from the police, Carrie Remington represents the unaffiliated, and Janet Barakian represents the retirees. I also wanna thank Barbara Sprognia and Brian Boyle, who are consultants on the committee that kinda work with the, directly with the health insurance, Fallon and Maya, to keep them honest and see if, you know, what they can do to get the best rates out there and what our best options are. So this year, with no changes to our health insurance, the rates came in with a 4.6% increase, which is not bad, but we also had, to build into our budget for this year, additional people that we had hired or agreed to hire at the November town election. There were two police officers, one additional fire EMT. You're also building in, and it's hopefully a planner, and the, we have one person at the DPW. So in total, there are seven people that we're adding to our budget. So that affected the overall cost to the budget for the town. So we looked at a number of changes to the co-pays for the employees and discussed going to a deductible plan, which was, you know, it reduced our increase in rates, but it also increased the cost to the employees, and we didn't feel that that was a viable option. We looked at increasing just high-tech imaging, we looked at increasing co-pays for prescription, we looked at a myriad of different options. What we finally settled on was an increase to the co-pay for high-tech imaging, which is like MRIs and PET scans, from $75 to $150, and an increase to the prescription co-pays from 10, 20, and 50 to 15, 35, and 80. And to go along with that, that we'd also like to increase the flexible spending plan that the town offers. The town contributes $100 per employee that is in that plan. We wanted to increase that to 150. So the insurance, and the insurance advisor committee was, it wasn't a unanimous vote, but that was their recommendation. That leaves the increase in premiums to the employees at 2.2% and the increase to the overall town budget because of the increase in the number of employees that we have on the plans at a 10.91% increase, which is about $70,000 over FY18 numbers. The dental insurance, we had, that also includes the dental insurance. There was actually a decrease in premiums of 2.72% for dental, with making no changes to the plan. So the recommendation that the, that the insurance advisory committee is putting forth to the Board of Selectmen is to remain with Fallon for FY19, increasing the co-pays from 10, 20, and 50 to 15, 35, and 80, increasing the high-tech imaging co-pay from 75 to 150. No changes on the dental insurance, but also increasing the flexible spending contribution by the town from $100 to $150. And that brings the overall budget to $716,257.90.
The increases on the co-pays are only for RX and the thermal imaging.
Yeah. So I'm looking for a motion from the board to accept that recommendation.
I have a motion to...
I'll make the motion to, to stay with Fallon at the rates that you've just given us. I don't have to read them all.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Allohs in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
How many employees was that company?
This budgeted for, how many did I say? There are about 50 people on the plan.
Oh, 50.
Yeah.
Becky, can I ask you, what were some of the other options under discussion? I mean, I appreciate that you guys were trying to keep the costs down, although it was a weird discussion to be keeping costs down, because it really had less to do with costs and more to do with just an increase, population, employees. That's kind of a different conversation. But what were some of the other things that you had on the table?
We had primary care co-pay from 30 to 40. That was a 3.55% increase. The prescription co-pay by itself was a 2.51% increase.
Yep.
There was a, changing the co-pay from 10, 20, and 50 to 20, 40, and 90. That's the prescription. There was a 0.94% increase over last year, so that was... There was a .94% increase over last year, so that was, but the co-pays for prescription is what the majority of your employees use, so...
It was keeping it the same, too? That was at 4-point-something percent increase?
Yeah, yeah. No, that was, .94% was over FY18, so it was only going to go up 0.94% over FY18's rates, but the, the co-pays for prescription was going to, were going to double for the employees. We looked at high-tech imaging by itself from 75 to 150, and that was a 4.29% increase, and this combination was a 2.2% increase. The deductible plan, I kind of touched on a little bit, was the employee would have to pay for hospital stays, like 500 for an individual and $1,000 upfront. You have to pay that deductible first before your insurance kicks in.
Yeah.
I don't actually have the rates for that, because it was, I wasn't selling that one.
Sort of universally, not, yeah, people were not...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the rates at the 4.6 without going there would have been something that, you know, they would have not even presented.
So, maybe I'm missing it, I just have one, or you can get it for me later. When I look at the increases, and this gets back to population increase of employees versus cost increases, you gave us the percentage increase to the overall budget, which, if somebody looks at that number all by itself, it's a little high, a little scary. It would, could I, is there a way to get the percentage increase that factors in the number of employees that we're dealing with? Does that make sense?
So if you take the 2.2, I think this might do, like, if you take the 2.2% increase on the premium and then compare it to the 10.1% increase to the budget overall, that difference between that premium increase and the overall budget is because we have additional employees staffing.
Staffing, and I think, and I think that's a number that's going to come up, you know, when we start talking with finance committee? I think they're going to want to, they're going to need to see that breakout of, these were hard additional costs because of new employees, and these are plan, plan increase costs, which is different, and you've worked to mitigate the plan increase costs.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
Finance Committee just actually had a discussion on that on Thursday night, so they are, they are well aware that there is, that a lot of this increase is attributable to the new staff, yeah.
It's a good place to be.
You know, and that did come up in our insurance advisory committee meeting, it's like, okay, this is, you know, we're settling on a 2.2% increase, but you do have two additional staff members, you know, two additional police officers, an additional fire person, you know, even like, we have increased people to take the burden off, the workload for people, so it's got to, got to balance out. So I think we came to a good compromise on the situation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Is there anybody here for public comment?
I'm sorry, but I just had to do this. Just be careful up there, when somebody dangles a carrot near the string that might be attached.
You're not referencing the latest executive order, are you?
I just...
That's a good one.
You know, if you don't laugh once in a while...
That was too meditated, wasn't it?
I thought about it. Okay. Through the chair, and unfortunately, Mike Pantos isn't here, because he's the Bay Path rep, I believe, and I just heard from a friend of mine up in Gardner, that Bay Path is going to cut out small engine repair shops up there, and I'm shocked at that, because I felt that that's something that should keep on going for longer than killing it now. You don't see that many electric engines out there or anything like that, there's still power products being sold, so I feel that it's something that should be continued. If that's true, that's why I wanted to ask Mike Pantos.
That's not something I'm considering for the current year.
It's supposed to end, the plan, the program is ending this school year.
I meant for the next year, because they didn't mention that at all.
No, so any of the students that are currently in that program, they're seeing them through graduation, but I believe they had a department head that was retiring, and that they're not replacing that person, because they've had less and less interest, unfortunately, in that shop. I want to say, and certainly John LaFlesch is the person that we need to have in here, and I know he would answer all your questions, but I want to say that they have replaced that shop with something that is termed more engineering, but they're still working with some of the things you're talking about. I know where you're, I know where you're saying, that, that sort of pure mechanical thing might be leaving, but that was part of the reason. We actually have a family friend that's in that shop, he has one more year to go. The plan is to continue with that shop with the kids who are already in it, but it will be a different teacher, because the current teacher is retiring.
It's too bad, in my opinion, because it'll, it'll be around for quite some time, and it's getting to be less and less people out there that work on that kind of stuff.
Yep.
The other thing, I'm going to hold off on my other thing that I was going to ask about another day. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Just go ahead, hang that carrot up there again.
We should put it up here, the carrot stick.
Anybody else for a public comment? If not, let's go to Margaret, Town Administrator, Budget Updates and capital funding.
All right. We need to talk budget, and so the board has, we need to talk budget. It's time, we have to talk budget. You have a handout in front of you, it's a, it's a PowerPoint, and unfortunately, I didn't bring the PowerPoint for overhead, so we'll go through slide by slide and just explain what we have, what our revenues look like, what budget requests look like. You also have the complete spreadsheet showing the FY19 budget requests, and two revision sections on your spreadsheet that are not set in stone. So the first thing I want to mention is that we do have a gap again. We, it's not as significant as we've had in recent years, but we do have a gap, and I'll go over revenues in a second. And I just want to mention that, before anything else, I've been attending the finance committee meetings, and I went to the finance committee meeting this past Thursday night, and I should mention that the finance committee has expressed a sentiment, they didn't take any official votes while I was there, but they have expressed a sentiment that an override should be presented to voters this year for the schools. So I'm going to go through everything I have here, but I want to make sure that you keep that in mind as we go through. So first of all, projected revenues. Our total new projected revenues are $21,449,523.33. Of those new revenues, the levy limit, that includes all the, all the debt exclusions, reflects an amount of $16,258,947.66. So the vast majority of our, of our projected new revenues, as always, is from the levy limit. State aid, net state aid, and estimated local receipts represent a total of just over $5 million, and then free cash and other one-time revenues totals $169,590. Our total new revenues are the amount, the revenue increase from FY18 is $908,644.42. So you got that number, 908-644-42. Our new budget requests, where the total new revenues are $21,449,523.33, our total FY19 budget requests are $21,735,306.78. So we have a current gap, based on the budget requests, of $283,785.45. Of the FY19 budget requests, I'm not going to go through every single budget section, but the Wachusett Regional School District represents 55% of the total budget. General Government represents 5%, Police represents 5%, Fire EMS represents 5%, DPW represents 6%, Principal, Principal Debt Service, on the Debt Service, represents 9%. Interest is 2%, and Benefits and Insurance is 7%. All the other budget sections represent 2% or less, generally. The percent increases, at the beginning of the budget season, back at the end of October, beginning of November, as always, a budget memo is issued, and then I meet with departments. The first budget meeting after the budget memo is issued, we go over what we have for projected new revenues, and what the expectations of department budget request submissions are. And it was very clear during that period of time, that if every department came in at an average of about 3%, 3.5%, that we could live within our, or live within our new revenues for the coming budget year. We have had some budgets that have strictly, some budget requests that have been in strict compliance with that directive, and others who have exceeded the amount. A couple of budget requests came in because of new staffing in FY18, so they couldn't, they couldn't come in at 3.5%. That was going to be taken into account, and it has been taken into account. It was also made very clear, when the budget memo was circulated and when we met with department heads, that there were two very important initiatives coming up in FY19. One of those is a town planner, and a town planner has been, has been, I don't, it's not, it's beyond needed, it's absolutely critical, that the town have a professional town planner in place to help guide the planning board in the decisions it makes. And the other piece was to have an e-permitting or streamlined permitting system put in place that the planner could actually oversee, so that the departments, as we build new residential homes, many, many residential homes, there could be better communications between all the departments involved. Those are two very important initiatives in FY19, not to diminish the requests of any other departments. So those are the things that were made clear upfront. Now, the other thing to consider in the, in the budget, is that because the Wachusett School District represents 55% of the budget, a budget increase, which they have presented to us of 4.82%, represents hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the difference between 4.82% and the 3.5% that was requested, represents a significant, a significant amount of money. In fact, the amount of money that that represents, I have it on here somewhere, is about 400, one moment, please, $480,000 would be the difference between the school district's request in the operations assessment, the assessment over the minimum contribution, and what the 3.5% would have represented. So $480,000 is a significant amount of money. Whereas, an increase in the Inspection Services Department, which frankly, I'm also advocating for, because the Inspection Services Department is very heavily burdened right now, and it's frankly, a part-time department, their increase in their requested budget is 19.51%, but their entire budget, their entire requested budget is only $74,000. And that would cover the Building Commissioner for 24 hours a week, the Electrical Inspector for 20 hours a week, Gas and Plumbing Inspector for maybe 12 hours a week, or something, something to that effect, but it would get them much-needed staffing capacity, hours that are much-needed there, in order to, to keep on, to keep up with their inspection requirements and the issuance of new permits. Not only that, the Inspection Services Department happens to generate a lot more money than they cost on our budget. They generate well over $120,000 a year, and their budget, their entire budget is $74,000. So it's important to make sure that the staffing is, is up to par with that. I apologize if I'm bouncing all over, but you'll see, the Board of Selectmen has before them spreadsheets. Every year, we go through budget requests, and we do, we do working budget revisions. So these revisions are not set in stone, they're revisions that are made, they're proposed revisions that, that would generate some discussion as to where revisions need to be made on the budget. It's important to keep in mind that over the past three years, municipal department budget reductions totaled over a quarter of a million dollars. So there have been reductions consistently in the past three years from municipal departments. So we do have to look at how we're going to continue sustaining municipal departments while there's budget growth in, in other budget sections or in various budget sections. So back to the finance committee meeting, I'm certainly not recommending this, I actually need the Board of Selectmen's feedback on the idea of a possible override, an override scenario for the schools. In this handout, I show an override scenario of $480,000. That's the amount, again, between the 4.82% that Wachusett has requested in their assessments and the 3.5% average that was requested from all other departments. An override, and that's, an override of that amount would be, would be, would have the impact of approximately 56 cents on the tax rate. In order to close our budget gap, I mentioned the 275,000 or the high, the high 200s number, in order to close a budget gap of an estimated $300,000, an override would be needed that would affect the tax rate by 30, approximately 35 cents. So, again, I have begun to do the budget revision columns, there could be some of the departments, I've already reached out to some of the departments that came in with requests over what had been directed at the beginning of the budget season. Unfortunately, those revisions, and the Finance Committee, I think, was on point with this, those revisions will ultimately, they don't immediately impact operations, ultimately they are going to impact operations, because they will impact staffing, they will impact service delivery, they will impact the quality of the equipment and the maintenance of the equipment. So it's important to keep those things in mind. Other reductions that I've been able to, to work in, some, some of these are what might be considered low-hanging fruit. For example, the RDIC had requested a budget line of $25,000. They actually have a fund that can be drawn from of over $35,000, and that can be addressed as a separate article, so we could take $25,000 off the budget. So there are little things throughout the budget that would have a positive impact and help reduce the gap, but we need to start thinking about what it is we want to do. Do we want to reduce municipal budgets again, or do we want to try to present an override in hopes that it will pass and municipal budgets will not have to continue to be reduced? It's the tough perennial discussion. I'm not recommending one way, I'm not recommending one way or another, I'm certainly not advocating for an override, and I'm certainly not advocating for budget reductions. There's one other thing I just want to make sure that I, that I restate. The directive that was made to departments at the beginning of the budget season was for the 3.5%. Several departments did comply with that, and in fact, came under the 3.5%, and I don't believe that it's equitable, at this point, to allow those departments who complied. It's almost as if those departments that complied with this could potentially be penalized by actually coming in at the sustainable budget increase, and I don't want to see that happen So, for discussion.
You also have to look at each department's reduced budget over the past couple of years, too.
That's right.
They're not equitable across the board.
No, they're not.
Some departments have decreased a higher percentage than other departments.
You're right, they have, and over in the far left-hand side of your spreadsheet, I've got a 10-year history from FY, from FY9 to FY18. You can see budget growth over that period of time. That does not take into account the FY19 budget requests.
I think we should go for an override. Put it on the ballot, and let the people make the decision, not, not us.
Skip, skip, this is the first time in 10 years that we are within striking dis- Hold on, hold on.
Wait a minute, wait.
Can I stop?
Yes, go ahead.
The board needs to discuss this.
First time in 10 years that we are within striking distance of this budget. Every year, and you know the best with me, that for 10 years, we have gone before this community with every permutation of an override, a debt exclusion, let's, let's pull out a debt that's under the levy, we've done that, we've done that, we haven't done it with the library yet, we could try that. They came closer than they've ever come in- They came closer than they've ever come, and we're in a better place than we've been in, hold on, let me finish, in a decade. And you know how hard it is for this community to pass an override. If we use that fight, which you know, we start to sound like we're crying wolf, year after year after year, when we lose and we lose and we lose, and we end up affecting town departments, and we're finally in a place where we can make this work, being a little bit more creative, and I have some questions for Margaret, that to waste an override request on a $300,000 budget gap, I have, I don't see it. It's not worth our time. We have other things that are more important that we're going to be asking for, like these debt exclusions for this ambulance, which I think is important. And, you know, and I'm looking at some other things, you know, we can certainly, we can talk about the field, the turf, or whatever. But here's the other thing, and I guess this didn't come up in FinCom, or maybe I missed it. We, we always spend a lot of time talking about the Wachusett budget. It takes up a lot of oxygen in the room, and they came in at their 4.82. It's not great. And I'm not saying it couldn't be a little bit better. And in fairness, though, we were not the ones hardest hit by their budget, by any stretch of the imagination this year. Congratulations us, you know, take a little break. We knew this was coming, but when we look at the Bay Path increase of 13.39, and now in fairness, I love that administration, they prepared us for years, saying that this was going to come, but to not include the Bay Path number.
I want to be, I want to be clear, and I neglected to mention that. The Finance Committee was discussing the entire education budget section. So, an override, yeah, they were, they didn't want to exclude one.
But, but again, Wachusett tends to take up all the oxygen in the room. And when we're looking at, you know, I know the number ends up being big because it's a big number, because they're a big district, but we're looking at 4.82 versus 13.39 at Bay Path. If we weren't including them all, I don't, we wouldn't be being fair to the schools as whole.
Now, that's going to be, if the Board does consider an override, the, the language in the override question will have to be carefully, carefully worded.
I have questions for you, Margaret. So on the e-permitting software, you put that in, is that a one-time expense?
A lot of that is one-time expense, and I've actually applied for a grant to fund the one-time expenses, and that's about $18,000.
Okay. And I'm looking at, I know you've played with some of these numbers, so I just wanted to ask you, because we were talking about parity with some of the departments. The town clerk number, which came down from an 11-point increase, 11% increase to .41, was that?
Okay, that is due to staffing shifts. These are not final, by any stretch of the imagination. I also need to note in these spreadsheets, departments were asked not to include non-union wage increases in their budget requests. So in the revision columns, those have been brought to level funding for hourly employees and non-contract salary employees. However, I think it would be, no, yeah, I think it would be disingenuous for the town to not take a look at equity adjustments for non-union employees. So that's something that I'm working on as well.
I apologize, it's probably in my budget book, but under Purchase Services for Police for Public Safety, there's that one number that's a 300% increase. Is that a specific item? Is that a one-time purchase?
There were some, there were some shifts in the police Purchase Services line and Supplies line. He actually moved some things from one line, he actually moved some things around between those three lines. And I don't have my Finance Book in front of me to specify exactly what those, those are, but.
And then you, you talked about the inspector numbers, and I can certainly see the increases here. And I just, I was, does that have a commensurate increase on the income side? So we're increasing all of the inspection services? We should be seeing that on the income side, right?
Absolutely, and permits. If we are expecting 50, 50 building permits in the fiscal year, we'd absolutely see that on the revenue.
So those increases, we should offset, we should see an offset.
You should, and I ask just, if you look, keep, I shaded the top of the columns that you should be looking at, the FY '19 budget requests.
And then your, the free cash sheet that I'm looking at?
Yep.
Okay. I see spring 2018.
Yep.
FCU scheduled.
Yeah.
Still on track.
No, the free cash guidelines would be shot, and that's, that's a concern of mine as well. So we, you know, the Board has used, over the past few years, the Board has used free cash guidelines to try to maintain manageable funding for the operating budget without overdoing it, generating a free cash base, allocating free cash to OPEB, to capital stabilization and to stabilization. We have, we have several, at the bottom of your sheet, there are several large amounts of free cash that are proposed to be allocated. This roof in this building is leaking and is badly in need of repair. So CIPC is recommending appropriating $82,000 from free cash to redo the roof on this building. Public Safety Complex Building Roof is also leaking, and CIPC is recommending $83,000 to repair that roof. CIPC has also recommended funding to repair the roof on the Historical Society's Building and for the Jefferson Street School Parking Lot, repaving Rutland's share of that, provided free cash is available. Now, when we look at, when we look at other requests, paying off the cruiser lease, the Fire Department turnout gear, that's, that's a contractual obligation, and a, and a big snow and ice deficit, we're going to find ourselves in the hole $62,000. But essentially, what that means is, we would reduce the amount of free cash we can generate to FY '18 by $62,000, leaving only about 30, about $37,000, $38,000 in free cash as a base to FY, FY '18 certified free cash. And ideally, not ideally, but we strive to keep $100,000 in the free cash base because we use $150,000 of free cash every year to recurring expenses, the budget expenses. So we want to try to have a free cash base in case certified free cash doesn't come in at $800,000. It's a stabilizer. Financial best practices.
I appreciate what you're saying, but you say always, and this has really only been the past three years. You know, that's right.
Always since I've been here, sorry.
Always since you've been here.
This is, okay, just over the past three years.
No, but I think I bring it up because this is, what you just said continues to be a better position than we've been in for the past almost decade. So I'm not saying it's good, I'm just saying it's not as bad as it used to be, which is a, we, we need to.
It's not as dire. It's, but, but hopefully, you know, I mean, the goal here is to try to stay on track.
Oh, of course.
Right?
I mean, yeah, I, I'm looking at the three, at two roofs and a snow and ice deficit, all of which are the exact same number, which is.
Snow and ice deficit, actually, my hope is that we can trim that $82,000 down to $70,000 and do appropriation transfers, but it's just too early, it's still March.
I'm guess, I'm just looking at big picture here, and I am looking at the ambulance and the cruiser debt exclusions.
So the Finance Committee's preference, I shouldn't say the Finance Committee's preference, because again, they didn't vote on it, but the sentiment I, I got from their meeting was that they'd prefer to leave the ambulance and cruiser leases, the additional cruiser lease on the budget and present the override. My fear, of course, is that if, if an override is presented and it fails, they're going to come off anyway, and when do we present the debt exclusion then?
Yeah.
So, it's a reality.
I think it's unfortunate that we continue to talk about leases, which is, you know, if we had a much bigger budget number to work with, and you could say that we had an easy ability to place a cruiser the way we've wanted to for years, every, every year there'd be a cruiser lease payment as part of the operating budget, I get that. We haven't hit that yet, we're getting closer. There's certainly more staff in the building, which is fantastic. And you and I talked about this ambulance and how funding this, what we hope to be a final ambulance this way, will put us in such good stead for the next round of cycling through our ambulances, the way we should be ultimately.
Right.
Down the road.
All right, so this, what, you know, what I've proposed here on the, on your PowerPoint is a seven-year debt exclusion on an ambulance. Again, this is provided the ambulance doesn't stay as a lease on the operating budget. But a seven-year debt exclusion, and these are very, very rough numbers, would have an estimated tax rate impact of five cents a year. If a cruiser was debt excluded for three years, there'd be an estimated tax rate adjustment of two cents. So the combined, the combined debt exclusion, the combined tax rate impact on the two exclusions over the first three years would be seven cents a year. And these are very, very rough numbers. I have not confirmed the rate on, the rate on the borrowing or anything of that nature. So these are just rough numbers, based on the estimated costs of those vehicles.
You know, Skip, the other reason I would much rather be talking about this is because, again, every year we try different things. This is a, a clearer, more transparent way to explain to people what is affecting their taxes. It's very tangible. It's, look, we don't have necessarily enough money under our levy, we don't have any levy capacity at the moment. We are going to take these two large items that we need, and we're going to pay for them separately as part of a debt exclusion. And when those items are paid for, that money will go away.
Or it'll go to another debt exclusion, or to another replacement mechanism.
It might, no, sure, of course. But unlike operating expenses, when we are talking about expenses for materials, for vehicles, we have a better time explaining that to people. And again, this is coming from years of, let's do a general government override, let's try a menu option and let them pick what they want, and it's pitting departments against each other. And every year, we have the same discussion of, we're going to do an override for the schools. Okay, well, what if it fails, but the school budget passes anyway? Oh, well, we'll have to go back and talk about the same cuts and the same money. We have the same discussion, clearly, there's something we're not doing right in terms of explaining it to everybody, maybe, but it, it doesn't help the problem in front of us, which as far as an operating budget goes, we're close enough. If we pull out what we should pull out, at least based on past practice of what we've had to pull out, because, you know, right, it just wasn't possible under the levy, we're going to be not great, but we're going to be okay. Not great.
The, the amounts on budget currently in the budget requests for the additional cruiser lease and the ambulance lease only total $70,000. So cuts have to be made elsewhere in the budget to get to that.
I mean, I would take out the e-permitting software.
My gosh.
No, I would make it one of your free cash items if we had it, because that is a one-time expenditure. That's exactly what we should be using.
Part of it is a one-time expenditure.
Part of it is.
Yeah, I know you're saying we shouldn't try, do the override for the school, but, you know, if they would come through with an honest number right up front, instead of us going through this every single year to get them to come down with their budget, you know, it, it would be just nice of them to do that, you know? Instead of us going through the paperwork and doing this every, every year, and they come back with us with, cut their budget here, cut us there a little bit, make it better for everybody.
In defense of them, they're doing the same thing that all our departments do. They're coming through with a proposed budget.
That's right.
And then we turn around and ask them, can you shave a little bit here, shave a little bit there, so we can afford it. I don't know what the other towns are saying about their increases.
Paxton is looking at an override.
Yeah.
Holden can fit it under their levy, but they're looking at a massive tax bill increase.
Yes. Yes. And a lot of free cash funding, from what I understand, so.
And that's always been a bone of contention.
Well, we're also seeing a really surprising amount of movement with Otter Bumps Report and the activism. It's possible that we'll get transportation money.
A little bit, yeah. And, and the school, the district has assured that if additional regional transportation reimbursement comes in, the towns will see it in, in the assessment reduction in that regional transportation line.
And I'm not saying we can rely on that. I guess what I'm just saying, Skip, is out of all the years where we've had, out of desperation, to try these override packages, this isn't the year.
So we might have an easy one this year, God forbid, next year.
I agree with you. I agree. I think, I think at one point, we're going to have to pay the piper, but I only want to do that override, that Shrewsbury-level override. I want to do that once. You do a correction budget, and it's going to be horrible and big and ugly. But then, you set a standard where you say to the district, give us five years historic, give us three years ahead, you're going to be held to the Prop 2.5 for the next X number of years, because this is it. Everything that you said you've needed, and you've put a price tag on.
Assure that, though.
We can't, no, we can't, I understand.
They could say it, but they're not going to stick to it.
Well, you don't know.
Well, we can't, we can't assure it, because we're not the district, and that's entirely the district, so. So, this discussion really needs to continue. The Board, the Board's deadline, if the Board is going to consider ballot questions, the deadline to submit written notice of the ballot questions to the town clerk for the annual election ballot would be April 9th, and that's your next meeting.
Well, can I, can we talk about the sort of low-hanging fruit first? I mean, is this Board looking towards putting on the ambulance and cruiser like we had talked about? To me, those are good, straightforward, appropriate requests for an increase in some of these taxes. The number is manageable, they understand what it's for.
So, yeah, so here are the, here's the scenario right here, just.
So if you're going to put that on, let's put on the override for the school, too, at the same time.
Right, see, that's my problem. Those are different things, and the more we put on, and we've done this, right? We've had all the questions.
That's right.
People's eyes start to glaze over. We hit two, three, four, five questions.
Well, there's going to be another question, because we have to talk capital exclusion for the turf field.
We do.
Yeah, we've got that also. So if you go to the people and say, look, this is what we need, we need the ambulance and the cruiser, please vote for it, and have them vote for what we really need, and let them make their own decisions on the turf field and on the override.
The benefit to putting, the benefit, as I see it, to putting the cruiser and ambulance debt exclusions on the annual town election ballot, with or without an override, is that, or with an override, actually, is if the override was to fail for any reason, you'd still have those debt exclusions that were presented and could potentially pass, and it wouldn't delay the purchase of a new vehicle.
Well, I, I think that's where I was headed. I thought those were the easy, these should go on no matter what we do. You know, I think we could decide on those, well, I thought we could decide on those tonight.
I have to say, that would be my recommendation, too.
And again, you know, Skip, this gets back to, say, before us, when previous administrations had levy capacity and they were paying for things under levy that never should have been. And we're in the building that is the prime example of that. This library should never have been under the levy. It has hamstrung us for years, many years to come. I would like to see the debt exclusions for the ambulance, I would like to see for the cruiser. As far as the turf field goes, you know, my understanding is that all the towns are going to have to approve this turf field for this program to pass. It's a big number. It seems like the appropriate project for a capital, one-year capital exclusion. This is, you know.
Well.
So let's back up just a little bit, Sheila.
Yeah.
Why don't you make a motion to put this on the law, the ambulance and cruiser?
I'd like to make a motion to place, I don't have the language.
I don't have, why don't I bring language to your next meeting? If you want to just go ahead and.
All right. Make a, make a motion to place with appropriate language debt exclusion questions on the annual town election ballot for a police, single police cruiser, and for, I just lost my thing, and for an ambulance.
To replace the '08.
To replace the '08 ambulance.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you can go to the turf field.
Well, we're getting a little off-budget here now, but budget's still, well, this is a capital, this is a capital item, so it's not something that's.
The reason I don't, I don't think we're off-topic, because when we bring these to the people, they think of it as part of, this is part of the town's budget this year, whether we do this or not, so.
So Rutland is being asked, I apologize, my numbers aren't exact, I looked, I looked at the most recent memo we received from the district, and the cost to Rutland is actually about $10,000 higher than the number that I previously had. to Rutland is actually about $10,000 higher than the number that I previously had. An estimated tax rate adjustment, or the estimated impact on the tax rate for Rutland's share of this project, which I had initially calculated at 138,300, was 16 cents. But at 148, just add another $10,000, so another couple of cents, you know, one or two cents. So, the reason I'm suggesting a capital exclusion is because the school district wants to, my understanding is that the school district, district wants to do, this is a turf field replacement for Wachusett, the high school. And my understanding is that they wanna do this in the coming year. There are still some outstanding questions as to, well, I, I need a better understanding of what the district is looking for the towns to do. They're suggesting that it's governed by the regional district agreement under the certain section for indebtedness, and I'm unclear as to what they're intending to do. Is the school committee looking to borrow money and have all the towns authorize the school committee to borrow for this? Are they looking for the towns just to come up with monies? I don't, I don't know for certain whether or not they are looking to borrow for this project, or have the towns just contribute to the full cost of the project and get it done next year. So I'm waiting for clarification on that. In any case.
So how do we address it? If we don't know, we can't address it.
No. If we don't know for sure, we don't, but I have made it clear to them that I am looking to, I am looking to propose a capital exclusion question on this. So I don't think the board can really take action on it until we have more answers, and I'd have those at your next meeting, but my recommendation would be a capital exclusion at this point. And I think the town meeting should be voting the amount contingent on passage of that capital exclusion.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna muddy the waters if they wanna borrow the funds.
Well, I'm.
If they wanna borrow the funds, and then we come up with a capital exclusion and just hand them the money, how is that all gonna break down?
Yeah, see, we're not clear on what, what steps they're actually taking. There's some reference to indebtedness, but I'm just not sure what exactly they're.
Yeah, when I read this, they have financing scenarios. The impression I'm getting is that they were unwilling to approach each of the member towns and instruct or request that they handle it a particular way. I think their initial thought was that some of the communities had free cash that would just hand it over, and others would fund it, the way we are talking about funding it. I think that changes the way they look at their financing, depending on how the towns choose to deal with it.
Right.
So I, it's chicken and egg here. I think they're waiting for us to make a decision.
Yeah.
I think in our case, they know we're not going to take our free cash and throw it at this field, so for us, it's a debt exclusion question.
This is our, this is our option.
For Paxton, it's gonna be some permutation of that.
Yeah.
I think they maybe considered that Holden, there is funding in Holden that they could use towards this. I think if that happens and Holden just hands them cash, then they're, one of their financing scenarios is almost off the table.
So, I've, I, that's understood. I've also presented a question to the district regarding the cost for the project. Initially, the cost was an estimated $500,000, but due to concussion protocol, concussion prevention, $100,000 was added to the cost of the project. So I've asked the school if they have any available funds that they could contribute to at least that portion of the project, where a phys ed class is not typically going to have concussion issues, whereas athletics that are played on the field and the cost that could potentially be paid through the athletic revolving fund, that might be more, that might be more appropriate. So we're waiting to see if the district has any funding, any available funding, that they could contribute to this, for, for maybe that portion of the project. So we still have some outstanding questions.
I don't know, yeah. I mean, unless we said we simply didn't wanna deal with this this year, I'm not sure what the question would be in terms of how we would fund it, other than the method you suggested.
I, I think, I think a capital exclusion is going to be our only, our only option, the most reasonable option.
So, Skip, to your point, this is one I would absolutely put in front of the voters and let them decide. This is a tough one, and you know, all those questions have been asked, why they couldn't find a sponsor that would pay for the cost of the field. It would be interesting to see if Wachusett Mountain, Polar Soda wouldn't have sponsored the Wachusett field.
I understood they were working on, on maybe starting to try that.
Yeah. You know, and it also speaks to the relative strength of their, of the school's fundraising and where that money is going. We're seeing fundraising, you know, on a local basis for certain things, and we really haven't seen it here. I think another question that came up, and it's appropriate, was really how many people are using that field? Is it really just for the benefit of the, of the sports teams? I think the answer that came out was that all the students take their phys ed classes out there, so that was good to hear.
I believe it's a legitimate, I mean, I believe it's a legitimate project from everything that I've read in their materials and everything we've discussed. I, I think it's important to main, maintain the field. Again, my, my most recent question was, can the district contribute any available funds to a portion of this, of this project? Particularly the portion where concussion, concussion prevention is, is included.
So, can I make a motion to include a warrant article? No. To include a ballot question on the May election for a capital exclusion to replace the artificial turf field at WRHS.
Do we even have a final number on it?
Yeah, it's that. At the moment, it's that.
Yeah, at the moment, yeah. For your next, for your next meeting, Will.
It's a nice even number.
But, but if you look through your materials, the, they must have built in a contingency, actually. It looks as though they did, because it looks like the actual project cost is more like $572,000 or something in that vicinity. 562,292.
Yeah.
All right, if we're gonna do this, are we gonna leave the, the number figure open for now?
I think we have to.
Oh, absolutely. No number.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I still would like to put the override for the school on it, too, but we'll talk about that the next meeting.
I hope I covered everything that the finance committee discussed the other night.
Yeah, you did, pretty much.
Okay.
Yes. I added somebody with a hand up back there. Did I lose you, or did you?
Where was that final figure? I didn't see it.
What was your question, Sarah? Please, Nate, give you, give us your name. We all know who you are, but just so that.
Mr. Sherman, none of you are enjoying this, are you?
No.
This reminds me of a yearly look forward to a root canal. Okay? You have a whole year to say, well, I'm gonna have a root canal, and I'm all looking forward to this. At what point do you just throw the towel in and say to the state and the federal government, if you're not gonna fund it, come run it?
Go, come run the whole town?
No, come run the school system. The town's running just fine, I think.
Mr. Sherman, it's a fair question, and I mean, I don't know how much you've been following.
I'm not trying to be off the wall, but this is crazy.
I know you're not. No, and I don't know how much you've been following at the state level, but if you read that auditor's report from Suzanne Bump's office.
I did not.
For, for us to have an ongoing conversation about how it's the town's fault, the town's fault, the town's fault, it's simply not. The percentage increases of costs when it comes to education, we know healthcare has been an issue over there as well, compared to the increases we've gotten at the state level, simply haven't matched up. And they've been asking the towns to contribute more and more and more. So we have two choices. Right now, there's a lot of advocacy going on and a lot of grassroots activism, which is great, especially if it works. Maybe we will see a better transportation number. The, the auditor's report is advocating for a lot of changes when it comes to the foundation formula. Maybe we'll finally see changes there. But if we don't, to your point, you're right, every town is gonna have to turn around and say, you throw up your hands and you say, we're either resigning ourselves to bad schools, 'cause at some point, that's what we're gonna end up with. We're seeing it in neighboring communities, not us yet, or that all the residents continue to pony up, which is a little bit what Shrewsbury did. And you think of the retail and commercial base that Shrewsbury has, and they still didn't have enough money for education, the education that they wanted.
Isn't there some town that's being run by the state and that?
Yeah, there are a few. South, yes, Southridge.
How's that working?
That district is.
Not good.
No.
Receiver ship is not the way to go.
No.
I mean, maybe it isn't, but, this is crazy.
The root canal only hurts for a little while. Then it goes away and we start all over.
I know I could count on you, Skip.
Mr. Williams.
To Sheila, is there any way of getting that, that audit onto the webpage of the town? Let the town read it?
Yeah.
Honest to Pete, when I read that, I was totally shocked, the smithereens, and I think the whole town should read that.
It's long.
It is long, but.
Yeah.
Our representatives.
She's right on.
Senators looking at this? Or?
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, so I, I give so much credit to Senator Gobian, to Representative Ferguson, for how much advocacy they do for us, but we're now seeing it, and it's, it's interesting to watch it, you know, and social media gets hit hard a lot, but there is a social media group that is advocating specifically for regional districts, and we are in the minority across 351 cities and towns. The money goes to the urban districts first. It goes to the big city districts, because that's where they perceive the most need to be. You get to these suburban, regionalized schools who regionalize because they were told they would get money for regionalizing.
Yeah.
And then it got pulled back, and we've not done well at banding together. And what we.
It's weakened enough.
Yeah, well, and what we're now seeing is there are elected officials, thank goodness not ours, who have not been supportive of regional education. They're outnumbered up on Beacon Hill, but they should, still should be advocating for their own schools, and we're, we're seeing those holes, and we're trying to fill them.
And I see her coming and all the work she did on that, that's just on the benefits.
Yeah.
Now she's gotta go to the town employees, or somebody else, and say, you're gonna get less next year. But we want you to work harder.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I mean.
It's been happening over three years.
I'll go back and say, when, when is it time to throw in the towel?
Well, I don't trust the state. One of the scenarios that they, that they've been looking at is letting the regional schools set their own budget and tax the individual landowners, property owners separately from general government.
Separate district. Other states do that.
For me, taxation without representation. I have no kids, so I don't get taxed.
All right. I'll go there.
Not, not quite. But that's one of the scenarios that they're looking at, and they want, I think they still want a trial district to try it in.
Well, that's the problem, too. They have essentially said, if you read this report carefully, when you talk about throwing in the towel, in some respects, that's exactly what they've done with existing districts. They think that the large-scale changes that have to happen have to happen in new districts, where they're trying something different, as opposed to reorganizing the existing ones, where it would be too hard. So where does that leave us?
I don't know. I just, I don't know what's on the other side of the, if the grass is any greener on the other side of the field, but this, this is crazy.
I think the grass gets greener as you move east. It does. Fewer regional schools, this, regional school districts are challenged.
It gets greener because they put a new field in.
So, so back to the override discussion, if we take, if we take the lease payments for the cruiser and the ambulance off the budget, that reduces the gap by about $70,000, still leaving a gap of about $230,000.
And that's using 150 in free cash.
It's using 150 in free cash, and we don't have a lot of flexibility with free cash, given the projects that, and I have to say, these are deferred, these have been deferred projects, and we're seeing that now with the leaks in the roofs.
We keep using free cash every year.
Yep, that's why the override scenario shouldn't.
No, Skip, I don't disagree with you. I just don't think this is the year to do it. Us piecemealing these little overrides, and we go back again and ask for another override in the year after and the year after, it's not, it hasn't worked for us, that's all. This one's.
What's the answer to that?
I think, again, I think the answer is a big correction. But you don't do that, you don't do that in six weeks. You do that across a year's worth of planning. We need way more information from the district, way more.
Way more information?
Yes.
Is it gonna be forthcoming?
I don't know. But, but that's a valid point, 'cause you can't go in front of a town meeting to whatever, 300 people, and say, you know what, we don't have the answers to 15 questions. They, they'd have to be so transparent for this to work, and we all have a million questions to ask, so.
Well, this, the ambulance one and the police cruiser, that's transparent.
It is.
All right.
Yeah.
So, that passes, and the other two fail? Well, I think that helps the town out quite, quite a bit, doesn't it?
Well, but where, the problem is, it's not just up to us. So when that school budget passes without us, like it did a couple of years ago, we still have to come up with the money. That's the problem. It's not just up to us. Unlike our town departments, our relationship with the school district, for better or for worse, is a partnership.
Except that if the school budget is voted.
Down by the town.
Down in the over, yeah, in, in an override, then the school district has to go back and make an adjustment, which could be as little as a dollar.
Only if another town does, too. As we know well.
Yeah, we, yeah, we do know well.
It's not just up to us.
Well, you got the towel.
And I think that we can be, yeah, I think we can be reasonably assured that the smaller increase we're seeing this year on the, in the education budget section is not gonna look like that next year.
No. No, not with 50 houses.
So, yeah, so we'll continue to work on that over the next couple of weeks, and April 9th again is the deadline to submit written notice of ballot questions to the clerk.
Okay.
I'll submit those first three that you voted tonight. I'll give, I'll give her that in writing that you voted to place those three.
So wait, April 9th, but that's our meeting.
It is your meeting, and you can give her written notice that night.
You can?
Oh, yes. Doesn't say what, by what hour.
Okay.
You can.
Yep.
You wanna touch on capital funding?
Well, I think we've, we've done a lot of that with the free cash sheet. We talked about capital, required capital projects.
Approve the dates.
Excuse me?
You have to approve the dates, don't we?
You do. You're gonna have to open the warrants.
I do.
Yeah, capital projects, I, we listed all of, all of the requested capital projects and CIPC's, not all the capital projects, but CIPC's recommendations for funding from free cash. There are a couple of other capital projects that are requested. We've got, oh, not refurbishing the, the media, something, refurbishing the media tanks, that's from the Water Enterprise. Replacing lines, that sectional line from the Enterprise. I think that's it. There are a few others that are requested to be funded outside of free cash. And by the way, the town parking lots, the Mill and Pave Town parking lots, that's been waiting. That's been approved by the CIPC for a few years, and that's still waiting for funding. So I think we need to pay attention to our own parking lots, too. We do. They're in horrendous, horrendous shape.
So, we're supposed to be talking about that and placing that as an article, right?
Not, not the Mill and Pave Parking Lots. Not yet. We don't have the...
No, for out here, right? We had a discussion about...
That one, that's separate, yes.
Okay.
And that, that funding is coming from, that's repurposing debt balance, yeah.
Right.
Debt proceeds. So...
Good talk.
No, on to new business. We kinda touched on the town election ballot questions.
Yeah, I think you've covered, you've covered that. I will have a draft warrant, by the way, for your boards, for the board's next meeting.
Special town and annual town meeting to set a closing date for articles?
Yeah, if you could call, just at the top of your calendar there, if you could just call those and open the warrants.
So, I'll make a motion to call a special town meeting for Saturday, May 12th at 6:00 PM, and our annual town meeting for Saturday, May 12th at 7:00 PM, both at Glenwood Elementary School. Vote to open the warrant and close both warrants as of Thursday, April 5th, 2018, at 12:00 noon.
All right, a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that's done.
We're gonna skip over the idling policy, appointment, appointment policy revisions. Did anybody get a chance to look at that?
No.
We can hold that till the 9th, too, if you'd like. That was it, yeah, that was the draft that was being revised.
Yep. Put it on next month, next, yeah, next month. It is next month.
It is next month.
Next meeting. We had a correspondence from DCR to acquire a piece of property on, oh...
County Road.
Off of East County Road. Hey, Gary, help me, will you?
Do you hear?
Nothing. They're looking for us to waive our, it's on River, East County and River Road. They're looking for us to waive our town's right.
Well, actually, it's, they wanna waive a notice period. This is actually in agreement with a private, a private party. DCR wants to, I think, DCR wants to preserve the property, but under the statute, there is 120-day notice period, but they may be able to act on the transaction a little more quickly than 120 days, so they wanted to waive the 120 days.
They're purchasing it, correct?
Yes. Or they're acquiring in some form or fashion. The one that's signed off?
Page two.
Oh, this one right here? No. Okay, so there needs to be a public statement of the waiver of the notice period.
That's the U.
Okay, so an official notification at our meeting that the Commonwealth is considering acquisition for the above stated purposes. The property will be managed under the Quabin Land Management Plan Guidelines. DCR-owned property abuts the property.
This is what has to be read? Or this is the certification?
No, it just says, it just says we need to announce that the Commonwealth is considering this acquisition. So then, so then, yeah, well, no. Managed under the Quabin Land Management Plan Guidelines, not under the Quabin Land Trust.
The way of river.
So then the clerk must assign this.
Yes. And he is not...
Shelter Island Fund is the listed owner?
Yeah.
Out of Lexington? I know, I looked at that, too.
Did you see that, Richard?
No, I did not.
It appears to be landlocked.
I...
You can have that. Take it home with you.
So I suggest that the board wait till it's April 9th meeting. The clerk's not here to sign, and the board could have further time to review.
Yep.
Okay.
The Hollap, yeah. Wingroy, the old Wingroy, Wayne O'Hallapain is property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no footage in Rutland.
Well, they own part of it already.
How many parcels is this?
Well, let's just say this.
It's 11.8 acres. It's, there's a piece in Hubbardston and a piece in Rutland. It's one, two, three, four.
On this property.
Good. So, so for several reasons, I recommend that the board wait till April 9th.
I'm not sure what they're trying to do, if they do owe taxes. Good.
Is there enough to pay for the school?
Probably not.
But every little bit helps, I heard him.
When DCR buys property, though, isn't that one of the requirements, that the taxes be paid in full before they purchase?
I wouldn't.
We just went, we just went through that on my mother's property, before she sold it. She had to pay all the, make sure all the taxes were paid in full before they purchased it.
It ought to be.
DCR proposing to buy the property, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it doesn't say.
They're looking to acquire it.
Just as acquisition and interest.
Margaret, I think the only issue is, if they mailed this out March 1st...
120 days?
That's, well, that's 30 days in, if we're not going to decide until April 9th.
It's fine.
It's fine.
It's fine. It's fine. We need to be able to do our due diligence.
Anybody want my copy?
So, Gary, you're up at bat.
Thank you very much.
Why do we always put Gary last?
I don't know. It's not snowing out, otherwise you would've been out first.
Okay, I'll try to go quick. And Mr. Sullivan's been waiting for quite a while, so I'll bring his stuff up first. So I received a proposal from Director of U.S. Events and Special Projects for leasing of the Rutland Heights property for parking approximately 2,500 cars for a two-day period in May to accommodate those that are in the Spartan Race at Treasure Valley. Mike, so you know, and I am getting the details in on this, I just got something this afternoon, I have made an appointment for 10 o'clock Wednesday morning to view the site, to see if it fits their needs. My number's on the board. They called me. I think they've tried to reach out to Mike in weeks past, it just, there was a little bit of telephone tag.
They did call me, and I returned the call twice, and they did not respond to me.
Did you raise your hand?
I thought you were acknowledging me.
So at any rate, I just see it as a couple, a weekend of pulling in a little, pulling in a little extra cash. I don't know what the proposal is. I do have a proposal letter here. They'll take care of shuttles as far as busing goes, and police details for traffic control. I'm just running it by the board and by Mr. Sullivan as well. I just look at it, maybe just a short burst of cash, but something that I don't see why we would turn it down.
It's a weekend event, correct?
Excuse me?
It's a weekend event.
It's a weekend event. It's in May. I believe it's the first or second weekend of May, so that's why he wants to get moving on it. And I told him, really, Mike, that the only parcel I thought was, a piece of that parcel was available, was on top of the hill. So, if you would like to join me for the sidewalk, or unless you're authorizing me as the chair of the, of the...
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, you may.
What's the date, sir? Wednesday, 9 o'clock, did you say?
10 o'clock, I said.
10 o'clock.
Yeah, I have a question, too, Chair. Is there any, is this a, is this any kind of, some kind of a fundraiser, or is it a private enterprise? I mean, is the...
It's for profit.
It's for profit, it's Spartan Race.
Okay, so it's not a cancer benefit or... I'm sorry?
What's your... What, what was your question?
It's not like a cancer benefit.
No, it's just, this is a private organization. I actually ran one of these races when they had it in Berry. So as far as I know, it's not for, not for any benefit.
So listen, this is the, you can look this up, this is a big deal, the Spartan Races, this is the Boston Sprint Weekend that Treasure Valley is now hosting for the third year with kids' races, beginner races, high-level races, and then there is an elite version of this event that happens in Berry at Carter and Stevens Farm in, I think, late June. So they come here twice. So honestly, instead of the money, I would much rather see them have their race here next time, because we would make more money from it. But just to give you an example, it costs $154 to race one person. They get thousands.
And, Chair, how, how do...
How would the town make money from that? I'm just, I'm ignoring...
I, I think it would be beneficial to talk to Treasure Valley. It is a for-profit event, and they clearly pay user fees to the venue that they work at. Carter and Stevens obviously is making money because there are people on their property at that point. They've got the brewery open, so there's residuals from that as well. Obviously, as a private entity, both of those places are able to work with it differently. It's very possible the Spartan would never host a race on municipal property. I don't know. I think we'd have to look through all of their different locations, but their races for the year have already started down south.
We can talk to the towns at...
Well, again, Chair, I'd be willing to schedule a meeting very early next week to, of our committee, to, you know, just get everybody up to speed on it. I guess the only question I'd have that I think perhaps needs to be answered is, does the town assume any liability for, you know, if someone gets a flat tire?
Yeah, we have to be part of the agreement, is that we would have to...
So how we handle, how that would be handled, I guess would be my only question.
I know that racers sign all sorts of releases when they first arrive, but that doesn't necessarily help them when they first park and get on the buses, so...
Right. So I guess, in the interest of time, I think that's something you folks need to be looking into right now, and...
Sure. The date of the race is May 12th and 13th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Gary, we might wanna check with Charlton and Sterbridge, where they've allowed parking in the past for nearby races.
Okay.
And the town of Berry as well, in case they've allowed public, parking in public.
Okay, so Mike, will you be there on Wednesday?
I need to check my schedule, but I will do my very best.
If you're not, I'll just report to you what they've said. I mean, nothing's gonna be signed up on me, I'm just gonna hear their proposal, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And to doggone it, the Rutland Heights, we have a serious problem that I'm sure your office has heard about, Margaret, because of the folks on Christmas Tree and Forest Hill. Private septic systems are being, coming flooded due to a beaver problem that's in a culvert that's approximately 12 feet deep, that's blocked, which is now a pond blocked underneath Rutland Heights Way into the pond to the south of Rutland Heights Way. We've been down there for, we were down there for two days with our pumps to try to pump out the culverts to see where the problem is coming from, the catch basins, and we cannot keep up with the water. The water now is just below manhole cover level. What we're doing tomorrow is bringing down our jet trailer to see if an amount of pressure from water will break up some of it, so we can get it to, to drain. Hopefully, that'll work, but honestly, Mike, if it doesn't, we're gonna have to deploy services, somebody to come in and get down there with some heavy equipment, which we do not have, on the pond side, to, to reach in and break open the culvert.
By, excuse me? And by equipment, you mean like a rotor rotor?
It would have to be, generally, you'd have to use a rotor rotor, but it's gotta be the same, you know, it's gotta be accepted by the size of the pipe. It can't be smaller, because it'll get stuck in whatever's down there.
I guess I was just...
And we just don't know that.
We're not taking up the road, is the point?
No, hopefully not. So, and alls I can say at this point is hopefully not. I certainly don't wanna do that. So, but I'll keep you posted after tomorrow. Tomorrow, I'll tell you what happened, but there are a lot of complaints and concerns with private septic systems, those that are not on town sewerage yet. Town sewers is available to them, they just have chose not to take, take it. Okay?
How much of that pipe is buried?
You know, linear feet is...
It's about 80 feet.
Wow.
Even the old staircase, you remember the old staircases down there? You can't see them anymore. They're covered with water.
Honey properties.
Water's almost up to road level. That's on the, on the north side of Rutland Heights Way.
Yeah, that is a low down there.
Gary, Gary, what, what has been seen so far physically? Is it the houses that are being affected? What are they actually...
Their septic systems have, are being flooded, and now it's to the problem, where some of them are saying it's approaching their foundations.
So have their septic systems been compromised? Are they failed?
They have not failed, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
How would they, okay. How do they know they're compromised, unless they've...
I'm just going by the reports I get from homeowners. If you've got water surrounding or going over the top of your septic system, I would consider that a compromise.
Yeah. So it's a...
Yeah, if your leach field's underwater.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, is that what it is? The leach field is underwater?
No.
Yeah, it's a leach, yeah, the leach field outback, yeah.
Has the Board of Health been over there, involved at all?
Yeah, have they?
Yeah, they, they know the situation, but I can't say that they've been over there.
Richard Stevens has been involved, yeah. I'm just wondering about maybe calling the state, hazard mitigation. I mean, you've got, how many properties there are in jeopardy?
Well, there's total 27 houses on that, on the roadway, but there's not that many have called, because it's only the ones that are on the west side of Christmas Tree.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Forest Hill that are affected, and most of those are not tied into town sewerage. There's only, there's only a handful of houses out of all those 27 that tied in.
Okay.
So, whether they're tied in or not, honestly, I mean, if they weren't, it wouldn't be a Board of Health issue, but it would still be compromising the...
No, no, it's, yeah, it's, you know, it's potential, it's potential jeopardy to, to properties, so we have to...
We are moving on it, I just don't know what the next step is until after, after tomorrow. Well, and I had some alerts on snow and ice. So I just figured I'd give you a little update. Right now, we are $147,779.82 in the red. And included in that figure is 19.5, which we had to pay for snow plowing contractors, because at most of the winter, we were down two full-time, three full-time people. So we actually had three contractors that had to come in and help us plow. So that's what we're dealing with for this year. Hopefully, we won't have more costs. The shed is full, supplies are all where they should be, and we're just gonna have to, have to play out the rest of the season. The highest I can remember being over in a long time, but it's, it's been a tough winter as far as supplies go. Okay? And the last thing I have for you is, I think somebody also mentioned a parking lot outside of this building at the side of the old primary building. Well, it turns out that it's not as easy as what we thought. Now, I don't know if any of you are aware, other than you, Margaret, that we do have an opportunity for some community service to help with the expense as far as equipment and manpower to pulverize the approximately 3,000 yards of material that I have in my backyard that was accumulated over 20 years for the sake of argument of road construction. So what I've done is gotten prices to, to bring a, a pulverizer in, but what that takes is not only the machine, but it takes a, another machine, a shovel to feed it, loaders to move the product, and trucks to haul the product, even though it's from the backyard of the DPW, right up here to the side of the primary building, and does not involve going over town roadways. And the DEP is involved with the community service portion, portion of it, we, I have to fill out and start the process for an RCC, which is a permit for recycling, composting, or conversion operation. It's an extensive, extensive permit and application process. I've been dealing directly with DEP, they've been very helpful with me over this. They've sent me some templates. But it does require review of environmental engineer PE for final sign-off, which I'm also working on, actually through Weston and Sampson, to review and see what it's gonna cost us to do that. The problem with it, Margaret, is I believe we had a timeframe to get this started because of possible closure of overlook. And DEP assures me that they will do everything they can to expedite the permitting process, but we're still looking at 30 to 60 days. So I am moving on that. I'll, I'll let you know where we stand. I will need help on that, and it will require some meetings down on New Bond Street at DEP, but they've been very, very helpful with it so far.
So, my understanding was, regardless of the date of, of closure of the project, the hauling, the actual hauling, the hauler would still be responsible for doing the community service, even if it does follow, you know, the conclusion of the original project?
That, that agreement, that policy, if you will, has been, has been set. So we know what the dollar amount is, we know how much we can, we can get, and we've estimated how long it will take, and how many man and equipment hours it'll take to take care of it.
I guess in a sense, it's good that DEP's already involved-
Yeah.
-with the project, so that helps.
And honestly, I, when I planned on doing this in town, myself, a couple of years ago, I had no idea that DEP would have been involved, because it's a simple truck from point A to point B, and it's not over any roads, and none of it's considered to be hazardous. So I would have just done it and paid the price later. But that's okay. Anyway, the last thing I have, and I don't know if I sent this to you today, Margaret, or not, but if I didn't, I'll send it tomorrow, and that is the proposal for the water and sewer rate study.
Okay.
So I do have it. I know I shot an email off to everybody-
You sent it.
-today. Was that, so everybody has that. That's for review. We can put that on, perhaps, for the next meeting. And also Fred Sivian has come at the next meeting as well, West Stone Water. And that's, that's what I got. Any questions? No.
Can you give me the snow and ice number again, please? 145-7.
He's right.
147-779-82. Thank you.
I have a question from the man in the back.
No, it's not a question, it's more a comment, if Mr. Keller allows it. I guess there may be a reason that the department heads are at the very end of the meeting. If there is, I'll just shut up. But it seems ridiculous to have him sit here, where he came to work at 6 o'clock this morning, until 8:30, now getting home at 9:00. It just seems to me it would make much more sense to have department heads at the beginning of the meeting, or somewhere at the beginning of the meeting, so that-
We do that in the case, if it was snowing outside, he would have been first, online, so get him out of here, see?
Well, I'll say-
He is, he is an instrumental tool. He has knowledge that quite often, once he goes home-
Yeah, I understand. I've been here for, for two and a half hours, and this is the first time he spoke, so why I'm speaking on his behalf, I have no idea.
Thank you, Mike. You tried, but-
No, you missed it. I had lots of questions for him early on, and he sat there and looked at me blankly.
On the-
Mike, just, I'll vouch for Skip. He does allow it sometimes.
Yeah, it's been about, actually, the last 10, the last 10 years, it's been twice. Thanks for asking. Once I was on crutches, but thanks for asking.
On the agenda, it said Moulton Pond. I had mentioned something to Gary, that I feel that instead of putting a dam down there, rebuilding the dam and using that beautiful money from Chapter 90 for it, which could go to my road, drain the, drain the swamp. Have the, you know, get involved with DEP, and not necessarily, DCR, excuse me, DCR, and they're draining a few lakes around, and I think that pond would be an ideal thing to maybe drain. Then you wouldn't have to build a dam.
Dick did mention that earlier, but we still have the, we still have the creek. So, the culvert would still, and that's 17 feet underneath that roadway, and that still would have to be rebuilt at, I don't know what cost. But the $40,000 initial, 25% of the 200 was approved, and I just did get the paperwork back from, from Chapter 90.
Is that project on complete streets? Is it also a project on complete streets by any chance?
The dam is not, no. That's through Office Bureau of Dam Safety.
Okay.
But I did, did talk to Dick about it. I just don't know what process we'd have to follow to get that started, honestly. I'm all for not spending the $40,000, because we're certainly going to need it this year, but we're lucky we can use that. If we had to take it out of any town funds, we'd up somebody's creek without a paddle. So, okay?
Wow.
All right.
Thank you.
Something else here.
No.
Present. So can I have a motion to adjourn, or has anybody got anything else?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.